Very good. All right, at this time, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation offered by Alder Johnson. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States, and to the republic.
I take this opportunity to do this a little bit differently, specifically calling attention to a crisis that our community is currently facing, and a crisis that that needs to be talked about, and one that is kind of really flying under a lot of radar screens right now, because I think we are just in the early stages of needing to have this conversation. I was part of a meeting last week, and I've been part of several meetings prior to that. Last week's meeting in particular included the police chief, it included the mayor, county executive, many others from our community, to talk about really the dangerous introduction and really expansion of fentanyl in our community. And in a very dear friend of mine, Sandra Rank, lost her son to addiction not long ago because of fentanyl. I think there are a lot of old-fashioned rumors out there that, why would drug dealers lace their drugs, they lose their customers? It's false. Why would, or that lacing drugs is as old as time, is a rumor as old as time, it is false, it is being done here in our community. We are losing a lot of people of every class, of every socioeconomic status to this. And so, and at the national level, this is an issue that is garnering a lot of attention as well. And so, what I'd like to do is just take the opportunity again, one, to talk about it and really call attention to it, but secondly, I'd like to read a poem to you called "Welcome to Hell" by Nellie Barnes, and it is about drug addiction. Welcome to hell, the sign should have read, reaching your destination all in your head. Last call for the train heading to nowhere fast, the memories you create will forever last. You want to buy a ticket, what's the cost you ask? Just hop on board, we'll talk once you're trashed. Close your eyes and picture something grand, no peeking, now trust me and give me your hand. To a beach with water and the sun shining down, open up, no beach here, you'll be hellbound. Of course there's water, but it's for your for your rig and spoon, little girl, don't be afraid, 14 years old, isn't that soon? The men don't bite, but you'll be messed up before beyond belief, when you do pass out, not remembering a relief. Ashamed to face mommy, go to have that coke, shooting dope every day, a girl with dreams lost all hope. I laugh at you, as you toss your life in the wind, too far gone, it's us till the end. I'll be there when you lose your pride, when you forget your morals, I'm at your side. You'll cheat and steal to have that fixed, won't take baby to the doctor although she's sick. Getting a pill, definitely number one on the list, oops, another appointment, baby missed. Nanny buys diapers because mommy stays high, daddy hits mommy and the children cry. After years of this bliss, the kids got took, mommy is a junkie and fast becoming a crook. You'll land in jail, a drug addict you remain, your heart turns cold as you play the game. Do not pass go, strip your dignity right here, this old man wants you, dry your tears. Quote a price, self-respect long forgotten, you'd sell your soul to the devil for an OxyContin. I told you, girl, the destination is in your head, welcome to hell, next stop, while she's dead. I told you that I'd stick it out till the end, for me, you traded your dreams and kids, your addiction, life, and your faithful friend. So again, I hope these words resonate with all of you in some way, and recognize that the addiction problems of our community are not the same as they were a generation ago or even five years ago. And I hope that we all are open-eyed and listening with open hearts to some of the challenges that many individuals in our community are facing, and I hope that we're able to come together and talk about productive solutions. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder, for those words, and thanks to Ms. Rank and the county executive for bringing us all together to attack this problem, which is really going to take a lot of partnership between city, county, PD, sheriff's department, private businesses, and private organizations and individuals. So, so thanks for bringing some attention to that issue tonight, Alder Johnson. Now we'll move along to approval of the minutes.
A move.
Second. Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. Any changes? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
No.
Two minutes. Oppose nay?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it, the minutes are approved, on to approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Alder Eck?
Yes, I'd like to.
Okay.
Oh, is my mic on? Oh, there we go. Whoa, whoa, thank you, Mike. Okay. I would like to move the section Q, specifically number six, up, up to after aye, please.
Second. Okay, probably best just to move the entirety of the report.
Right, okay, the whole Q and then, yeah, specifically six.
The Q after each?
After, after aye.
After aye. All right, that amendment was offered by Alder Eck and I believe seconded by Alder Johnson. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it, the agenda has been amended, entertain a motion.
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Alder Morgan?
I'd like to make a motion to move item P. Mine is item two, but as usual, I guess we'd ask that we move all of P up. Regarding two, we have at least a dozen, I think, people that want to speak, plus a couple representatives of the property owner.
Okay, so Alder, were you suggesting taking up P right after Q?
Yes.
Okay. That amendment has been offered, is there a second? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose nay? The ayes have it, the agenda has been amended again, entertain a motion. Alder Scannell makes a motion to approve the agenda as amended, seconded by Alder Eck. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose nay? The ayes have it, and the agenda has been approved as amended. On to report by the mayor, just a couple things this evening, apologies for joining you tonight, tested positive for COVID this afternoon, so abiding by all the appropriate protocols, and so that's why I'm participating in this way, but mildly symptomatic and doing all right, but just wanted folks to know why I'm not in person. And then, secondly, I think a lot of people noticed the revaluation letters that went out recently. You know, this is something that our common council has been talking about for probably a year and a half at this point, but it doesn't really become real until those those letters arrive. So just encouraging Alders to to encourage their constituents to to take a close look at that letter, contact the folks that are that are highlighted there. And then, secondly, urge people to to take note of the budget process this time of year, where we're oftentimes trying to get folks engaged in that process, and so now is a really important time for people to be paying close attention to how that all comes together. It's important to note that that the tax rate is is determined by our common council. So if folks are concerned about taxes, it's the budget that really determines what that tax rate will look like. So just wanted to to make that point. With that, we will move along to announcements. And goes without saying that this could be a little clunky, I'm going to try to take note of who's in a queue, so if you all could could press your buttons rather than nay, because I can't see anyone. Alder Stoyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. Circles Green Bay, a dynamic group who works to aid people out of poverty, is looking for volunteers to assist in a variety of areas. I am involved in Circles Green Bay and can be contacted if you are so interested. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder.
Oh, I thought you were going to do it.
Any other announcements?
All right, we have one more. You want to do it? Okay, this date on September, well, I'm sorry, on September 25th, Sunday, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, there's going to be a luminary memorial walk. The Marine Corps League Northeast Wisconsin Detachment 1130 will be walking in honor of our fallen and their families, and this this will be on the Sergeant Benjamin Ettinger Cordeur Trail, the West Side Trail. So I would advise you, if you could, to come on out. It's a great trail, I use it all the time, and hope to see you. September 25th, Sunday, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Alder. Any other announcements? Okay, seeing none. Along to appointments?
Motion to approve, oh, I don't know, you mean reappointments?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, that was seconded by Alder Stevens, and that is a motion on these reappointments. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it, and those reappointments are confirmed. Onto a public hearing, my understanding is that we we likely will not need this public hearing, but I was hoping that Attorney Bunker might be able to to weigh in to explain what's going on here.
Okay. Yes, good evening. So the the recommended action for this public hearing is to actually hold the public hearing until such time that statutory requirements are met in order to proceed with the with the discontinuation of the public right of way. So staff was alerted that there there's additional actions that need to be taken with respect to the adjacent properties. So as we move further along the agenda, the item in the Plan Commission Report will actually need to be held as well, as long as the resolution, but those are the underlying reasons to hold the public hearing. So because those things are being held, the public hearing needs to be held as well. It just so happens that the public hearing happens timeline-wise, it occurs in the beginning of the agenda. So the recommended action is to, a motion to hold the public hearing.
Very good.
Motion to hold the public hearing.
And before, I apologize, before we get to that, I'm supposed to be on on Q now, so that's what we will do once we get to the public hearing on the agenda, but we are going to Q at this point, which is the report of the Finance Committee.
Okay.
We have a motion there?
Motion to approve.
There a motion to approve?
Yes.
So Alder Stoyer made the motion, and Alder Scannell seconded it.
Very good. Any items here to be handled separately?
Number six.
I'm hearing six?
Yep.
Any others? Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it, the report has been approved with the exception of item six, your wishes?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stoyer. I'm not sure who pulled this item, but go ahead, Alder.
Okay, yes, I pulled it, and I actually know that there's some people to speak on it, so if I could make a motion to open the floor so they can share prior to me saying anything more.
Motion has been made to open the floor.
And that was seconded by Alder Stevens.
Seconded by Alder Stevens, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it, the floor is open. For our guests, please just approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. And just a reminder that that we allow for three minutes under our rules for public comment.
Someone here to speak on the rebranding?
Yep.
Okay.
My name is Dave Boyce, I'm at 123 South Quincy, and I don't think it's a good idea to rebrand. You know, there's a lot of other things that are far more important that haven't been done. It'd be more important to focus on the roads and stuff like that. I made up the shirt as an example of a little bit of a variant of the logo that we have. And it don't take much to change what we have, you know, but to have somebody have a logo like a rainbow bridge or something, you know. I think what we have is really fundamental, it's like the Queen of England, you know, it's a standard that's been around for a long, long time, and it represents, for me, it represents stability. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
My name is Sangkyeong Graham, my address is 2061 Sylvan Court in Green Bay, 54313. I wrote to the members this afternoon about this issue, but I'm going to approach it a little bit differently. My husband was a, I was listening to your introduction about fentanyl, how that problem is spreading and getting worse. I thought about my husband, and he was an alcoholic for a very long time, over 40 years. And about eight years ago, I I gave him ultimatum, saying, okay, it's either you quit it or I'm leaving. So he had to go into rehab center, which is a Christian-based in California, that was a long way to go. But he went there for three months, and he wanted to come back before one month was over. And I said, if you're not staying three months, I'm not taking you back, and we'll go separate ways. And ultimately, he he he's lasted three months. So in that process, he completely changed inside out. And, yes.
Ma'am, I definitely appreciate you sharing your story with us, but I was just curious, I was hoping you could stick to the item at hand, please?
Oh, yes, I I'm getting to it, sorry. Do I have a time limit?
You have three minutes.
I am sorry, I didn't know that. Then I will stick to my story. But I started that story because I think we need to approach it from inside out, whatever we are having issue in Green Bay, we have a lot of issues, including this, I think the rebranding came out of of trying to solve the problems, and lacking in workspaces, workforces. And yes, I do hear that from everywhere, but that's not limited in Green Bay, it's everywhere I go, out of state and in-state, and they say, well, we don't have enough people to work, that's why it's it's a problem. So I was thinking, what is the real problem here? And, you know, by branding, rebranding it, by us paying this much money, do we really solve the problem? Do we, or we are wasting money? In my opinion, we are wasting money. And it seems like it takes more than $100,000, because that's initial cost. And marketing, branding is just branding, it's not solving the problem, we have to make the city better to attract people, in my opinion. Lacking people in workforces, as I said, is not limited to Green Bay. So what's the problem? And when I thought about that fentanyl problem, I think we are spiritually lost, we need to go back to where we started as a country, and I think we need to have, I know, most of you may think this is far-fetched, but we need to go back to the, to have God back in, and prayers in the schools, and prayers in the cities wherever we live. And I love the size of city, I didn't come here because I was looking for huge size of the city like Chicago. I I love Green Bay because, yes, the Packers, but also because of the size of city. And I I really do.
Mrs. Graham, your time has expired, if you could wrap it up.
Okay, thank you. My bottom line is, we need to go back to God and have have that in our lives back, so that we can, we can, we can build up the the foundation and not spiritually lost, and have this, all this fentanyl and addiction problems. And thank, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any others who would like to speak?
Yes, Mayor, there's someone else who's approaching the podium.
My name is Mark Burgland, I live at 806 North Broadway. And just to start, I did watch the video presentation of the Finance Committee, which I think might have been last week, and I was quite surprised, it completely changed my opinion of rebranding going into it. You know, everybody thinks it's it's a flag, some stickers, some logos, things like that. And after looking at the presentation, I realized it's a lot more than that. I think it's probably a good idea to explore that, to get people to move to the city of Green Bay. However, I think that even though it's a good idea, and I think it needs to be explored, my opinion, it's the wrong time to do it. To expenditure that kind of money at this point in time, when the city has so many other things it needs to do, it hasn't formulated its budget yet. And I guess that's about it, that's what I've got to say. So what you say, I think it's a good idea, you know, and and I think everybody should watch the video to get a better idea. I think there might be some public perception about what this program is about, but I just think at this point in time, we should be looking at other things as far as our budget is concerned, and review it in the future. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
There's no one else approaching the podium, Mayor.
There is no one approaching the podium?
Correct.
Okay, and just so, so Alders are aware, we do have Mr. Ketchum on on the Zoom here, he is with North North Star Place Branding and Marketing. So if there are any questions for Mr. Ketchum, now would probably be the time to pose them. Any questions?
I think we need a motion to close the floor.
Motion to close the floor?
Motion to close the floor made by Alder Scannell, seconded by, was it Alder Johnson?
Johnson, yes.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it, the floor is closed, and we have a motion to approve. Anyone like to speak here?
Yeah, I think, Mayor, just a heads up, it doesn't appear that the queue is working for several people, so this might get.
Okay, yeah, I'm not, I'm not seeing anyone, so try to manage that on your own, I guess, in orderly fashion.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm in both, I tried both, so refreshed everything, I think Alder Burnett has.
Alder Johnson, are you seeking recognition?
Yes, yes, thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, you know, one of the things that I I thought that was interesting during the the presentation that Mr. Ketchum mentioned is that branding has a branding problem. And 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 I think that's that's very accurate, and it was a very good presentation, I I think there's a lot of good content in there. Much, very similar to the concern that I had last time this came forward, that concern has still not gone away, and that is, the city of Green Bay has a lot of fiscal challenges, and and we have to make some decisions about prioritizing where our needs are. But I don't want to be so dismissive of the branding that it becomes exclusively a fiscal decision, because branding has its place. There are organizations that spend millions, if not hundreds of millions of dollars, on branding, and there's a reason that they do it. It matters, it has an impact. The one concern, however, that I that I did have, that I shared last time, and I still possess to this day, is maybe the limited amount of dialogue that we've had with community partners on this particular issue. One of the things that Mr. Ketchum really kind of focused on in his presentation was talent. And yes, everybody's facing a talent problem, but talent is also more migratory than it's ever been before. And if we don't position ourselves as a place that can attract that talent, it it, we're not going to have that opportunity. And make no mistake, if you talk to employers, there is a talent crisis in our community, just as there is every other place. We get that. If you talk to realtors, they will tell you that they are entertaining more requests from clients to relocate to this area because they love the community, and not necessarily because of the job. So there's a real opportunity there that we can take advantage of. I'm not sure that I'm at the point yet, however, without constructive dialogue with the chamber and with Discover Green Bay and some other community partners, to see how we go about this together. And so I am going to offer up a motion. I'd like to to make a motion to hold this until the budget discussion, where we can evaluate, you know, its merits along with everybody else, but more importantly, the reason I'd like to make that motion to hold is because that will give us, what, 60 days maybe, to engage in those conversations with the chamber, with Discover Green Bay, with some other potential partners, to determine if the city of Green Bay truly needs to absorb all of that cost, or if there's something that our other partners are doing that might be able to supplement this, or maybe even take it on wholly. And and again, the reason I go back to holding versus just immediately dismissing this right now, is we've gone through a lot of effort to to do these RFPs, to get feedback from experts, and I don't want to go through the process of of having people do that because we wanted their expertise, and then dismissing it without giving it proper time to talk with other partners that might be able to help shoulder the expense or the burden on this. 60 days doesn't require the staff to do anything else, doesn't require us to do anything else, doesn't obligate us to any expenditure, it literally does nothing but give us 60 days to have a few more conversations, to see if that there there's a partnership that can be had here to serve the city as a whole. So that that is my motion.
I think so, there is there a second?
Alder Galvin.
That was seconded by Alder Galvin?
Yes.
Any further discussion on Alder Johnson's motion? Alder Eck and Alder Stoyer, maybe?
Okay, yes, I I I would, I guess I'm against doing that, because I don't feel like this is a one-time thing, this is not, there's, you know, there's a rebranding, and then there's marketing. It's, if you rebrand, and we get a new logo, that is changing it out on every single city truck. Everywhere you see the city logo, that's going to be switching it out, it's not going to be $101,000 by the time it's done. And I feel like, you know, we don't really need the new logo, I think, I don't know about anybody, I I've done quite a bit of traveling, and if somebody says, where are you from? I say, from Green Bay. You know where they know, they know Green Bay. Why? Because of the Packers. And I don't think we need more exposure as far as to let people know what, about Green Bay. I know that we need more employees, specifically for city employees, and we need our wages to be more competitive with surrounding municipalities, so I would rather focus on something like that than to put any more resources into the rebranding. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Stoyer.
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. I think right now, I'm in agree, in agreement with holding it till budget time. I I know that what Mr. Burgland said, his comments were, he was a little unsure of it, like if the timing is right and that, there has been work done on this already, and I would hate to throw that out like Alder Johnson stated. So budget's coming up shortly, I think we can talk about it at that time, so I'm okay with holding it. Thank you.
Alder, any further discussion on this? Is that Alder Campbell?
Yeah, I'm not in favor of holding this item, I think we agree with Alder Eck. You know, I've talked to quite a few constituents and some people that have served on the city council already, and they voiced their opinion, I think it made a lot of sense, you know, the taxpayer people want to spend their money on something they can reach out and touch. They all agree that it's probably a good idea, again, not right now. They want to be able to touch something, they'd rather have a police car, a new police car, that they know is going to protect them right now, tomorrow, when it hits the streets, not. right now, tomorrow, when it hits the streets, not some idea that is unfathomed and only promising. It's a grocery list. Doesn't guarantee anything, so I'm not in favor of holding this item.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Scannell?
Oh, okay.
No, if, if, you don't need to, you don't need to speak.
Yeah, I'll make it quick. I, I, I'll favor, I'll favor holding it. I, I think, I think it's very short-sighted to not realize marketing and branding is the future. And to not be prepared and working for your future by going for short-term goals, I think is very short-sighted. So I don't mind waiting till budget time to hash this all through, but I'm very, very, very much in favor of moving forward with marketing and branding because I believe in the future. And to put off the future is a big mistake. Thank you.
And Your Honor, Alder Galvin would like to speak?
Alder Galvin, go ahead.
Thank you. After listening to the presentation at the Finance Committee, and I would urge anybody that hasn't to take a look at that, because if, if you don't look at it, yeah, you think it's just, it's a new logo, roll a toilet paper on a flag, let's go team. But that's not what it is, and it's not tourism either. It's attracting people to our community. It's highlighting the pluses that this community has, which is so much more than the Green Bay Packers. We have so much more to offer. And if you really sit down and think about it, how do you get that information out there? How do the other communities surrounding Green Bay? Why are they having bigger population growth, house building, businesses moving in? Why are they going there instead of Green Bay? How do we let people know that we're open for business? How do we attract them here? Why do we make, how do we get them to take that, make that decision that, no, I'm going to be in Green Bay? I'm not going to be in Bellevue, Alloway, Howard, or any of these other places. How do we get people to do that? How do we get people in college, in other communities, and outside the state to think about coming here? Because they watch the Packers on TV? That's not going to do it. We need to sell ourselves, and we don't have to make stuff up to do that. We have a lot of positive things happening here. A lot that we've been discussing just this year, Bay Beach, Wildlife Sanctuary, Barrett's Creek Parkway, our other park systems, the pools, the Bay of Green Bay. I mean, there's so much more going on here. And so I think this is worth looking at. I do have a short laundry list of questions from a very concerned constituent that if a presentation is made tonight, I will, will voice then. Otherwise, I would like to hold this to see what our budget's going to look like, and see how things are shaking out, and then make a decision if we move forward from there or not. Thank you.
And then, Your Honor, Alder Burnett would like to speak, and then Alder Morgan.
Alder, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'm against holding. I, I was critical of this a year ago, I should say, less than a year ago, but for newer members of the council, this is, these are funds that were held from the Cooperative Governance Agreement that we reached with the United Nation. What I argued then was that that $100,000 that was being held for this initiative could be put directly into the community on a variety of different issues that are, needs that we have right now. Rebranding of $101,000 only is the first part. A brand is only as good as what people outside of your community are aware of you rebranding. In order to do a proper marketing initiative and, and exposing this brand to other markets and other municipalities and people across the country is going to be rather significant. It's not that it doesn't matter, it doesn't mean that it doesn't raise to a level of somewhat importance, but given all of the needs and priorities of this city, I just can't imagine right now, holding that $101,000 any longer is a prudent decision. We don't know what the tax rate's going to be. I know that the beginning of the meeting, the mayor had indicated that the common council approves the tax rate. That is correct, but the mayor prepares the budget for us to consider, and hoping that that budget that he sends us has a much lower tax rate, because that's, that's the pain that people are feeling right now with inflation and fuel expenses and you name it. People are really scared right now financially for a lot of reasons. And if we can just end this right now, use that $101,000 as kind of a rollover into the next budget year, and return to the people an acceptable tax rate, given the assessments that they're being hit with, so I'm against holding it. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments?
And then Alder Morgan.
Alder Morgan, go ahead.
I did tune in to that Finance Committee, and I watched the presentation. I was very impressed. It did change my opinion of what they were looking for, but at the same time, I think I would have to vote against holding this also. First of all, it's the wrong time to be spending any extra money. I've gotten so many calls and messages wanting to know about our tax levies and all this. People are just afraid of what's going on financially in their world. Also, I question, and have, I looked at the six names. I don't recognize any local names. I do agree with Alderman Eck that it's marketing. Couldn't we possibly look into one of our local advertising agencies to possibly promote Green Bay and show how we can make people want to come more? One of our citizens I was talking to, they say that we don't want to be just known for the Packers, and I'm probably the wrong guy to talk about it because I'm not a professional football fan anymore. But you go anywhere in the world, and you say you're from Green Bay, and almost everyone says, "Oh, the Packers." I always used to say, without the Packers, we would probably be like Fargo. This friend of mine I talked to said, "We'd be like Topeka." Who knows what Topeka's for? Cal Mizzou, Michigan. These are all cities that are the same size as ours, pretty, pretty much. So I think we do need to be able to utilize that Packer name. And like I say, I'd like to see if we have some local advertisers could help us do that, maybe save a little money doing it that way. And this can all be brought up after the budget again. There's no reason we can't bring it back. So I will vote no on the holding also.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments?
Yes, from Alder Weary.
Alder Weary, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with City Council, President Burnett, and others who spoke likewise. We had this discussion not that many months ago with the previous council, where this $100,000 will, will very easily blossom into probably at least a million, if not more, in, in other costs. So, you know, the country's in the middle of a recession right now, and we have a lot of projects that we constantly talk about here that we're not getting done. And I, I hear comments also about how it was such a great presentation, and, you know, it was, but we also have to remember their salespeople. They're trying to sell you the rosiest, glaciest possible outcome that they think can happen. So you have to view it from that angle as well. It doesn't mean all those things are going to happen. It's, it's a sales pitch. And so I think we should vote no on holding it, and vote it down, and get to the work of the, of the things that we can do right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. We do have a motion to hold this item.
Mayor, Mayor, we also have Alder Grant and then Alder Hutchinson.
Okay. Go ahead, Alder Grant.
Thank you. You know, I hear a lot of everyone saying, "What are we going to do to draw new people in?", but I haven't heard a single person say, "What are we doing to keep our residents that exist here?" And after the letter that a lot of people received, I got calls saying, "What is keeping me here anymore? I'm, I'm ready to leave. My taxes keep going up. I don't see my services improving." So I'm worried that with this, we don't have a measurable outcome. Who's to truly say that people moved here because of our marketing strategy that we did? So I want to make sure, one thing we can do is be respectful and responsible with our existing taxpayer dollars. And by being wise with the money and spending it on things to improve the city for the people who live here, that actually goes a long way. Another resident brought up a, a thing that, in a previous city that he lived in, they actually drove people there by reducing taxes for new builds. So the initial owner had reduced taxes until they sold that home. And when people buy homes and build homes, they're typically planning to be in a city for a long period of time. And if they raise a family, now we're talking about another generation that has ties, that will want to come back to our city. And the longevity of that, to me, seems to be a little bit more worth it than throwing a hope out there and hoping that it works. So I'm against holding as well.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Hutchinson?
I'm for holding. I think if, I would encourage everyone to look at the presentation if you can. The notion that this is a, is a sign or a flag is not, is not correct. I was, I'm part of the Finance Committee, and I asked the presenter, "Does this dovetail in with the city plans if this $100,000 we spend?" And the answer was absolutely. So what they're going to do is look at what the city does and mold a plan that jives this, what the city has to offer, and present it in the best way, using the best communications that they can. This is what they do for a living. This, this isn't a local company. This is a national company, international company. And they can do this. And I think if we get 1,000 people to move here, or 2,000, that's going to lower taxes. We talk about the taxes. We just got the reassessment. Everyone's concerned about taxes. We'll, we'll explain in the next weeks or months. You know, that doesn't mean necessarily your taxes are going to move up or down depending on where you are in the schedule. You have to take some thought. This is thoughtful. This is a thoughtful deed. It's thoughtful money. It's looking down the road. It's getting people to move to Green Bay. It's going to ultimately lower the tax base. And if you can't see that, I'm, I'm kind of overawed by saying, "Let's take the $100,000 and buy a car." That doesn't make any sense. If you spend that $100,000 on this, it actually means a lot of money coming to Green Bay. So I am totally in favor of holding this. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder.
And then Alder Campbell, and then Alder Eck for a second time.
Okay. Alder Campbell for a second time, and then Alder Eck also for a second time.
I just want to add to the fact, I did not see the presentation, but I have had very concerned citizens weeks ago when this thing came up, and they looked up into this company, and they rated a one out of five. That was the first red flag that I saw. If I was putting a product on my shelf, ratings matter, and that's overall. And there was examples of it, and a one out of five doesn't, doesn't make me want to look into it anymore. I had another constituent call me today, hour and a half conversation. I was hoping he'd speak tonight. He brought up, "We need to fix the core of the problem. We need to figure out the core of the problem before we can figure out a resolution to it." So we got to all go down, and he said, "In your workshop..." And I thought, "That is what common council is here. We're a workshop. We should be working on something, not trying to, trying to figure out and hope that something is going to work by trusting somebody else that has a number-one rating out of five to do what we know we need to be done." I've only been here a while, but I've lived here all my life. We do need to get to the core of the problems. The fentanyl, that's probably not the core, but what dragged that all here? We have to figure out why. There's really no big businesses, other than Green Bay, that we can ride the coattails on for free. Maybe we could put some money into advertising at the game from the city of Green Bay. I would think that would be a pretty good backing for us to invite people here. Maybe the mayor out on the field, giving a speech, inviting people to come to Green Bay. There's a lot of other ways, not spending money, just time. But I think we need to focus on what really is the core of the problem. This, this person today has been around the business for 20 years. He said if his taxes go up, that's where initially this started on. And he had very good input about the core of problems. He's an engineer. He's done this all of his life, and he's came from another country legally. So he really had a lot of good things to say, I think. I told him, I said, "Everybody here," you would turn their head, you would bend their ear, because it was a very good, very good presentation. He had a lot of great points, but his main thing was getting to the core of the problem. So I think that's what we got to concentrate on in our workshop here, whether to hold it or just wait for a better time. I think that's what I would support.
Okay. Thanks, Alder. Alder Eck?
Yes, one thing that I do want to also point out is, I don't really see a means of how the, we could have measurable results in spending this money. And I think it's a lot of money to not be able to have concrete measurable results of it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. We do have a motion and a second to hold this item.
And then Alder Johnson, excuse me, Your Honor, Alder Johnson would like to speak again.
Alder Johnson for a second time.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. So I, I just kind of want to maybe talk through a couple, couple points that were made and provide some, some clarity, perhaps. One is, I think, you know, there's been some discussion that, hey, we don't know what the, the final cost of this is going to be, and I agree. And, and I think there's, there's maybe a suggestion that we ought to dismiss this because we don't know, and I'm suggesting that we hold it so that we can know. And I think that's what a responsible governing body does, is, is get the answers so that we have all the information so we can make a responsible decision at the end of the day. So I would like to know. I brought up, at the last, last time we debated this issue, I brought up a nearby community that spent $1.2 million on their overall execution of this. And what I learned is that they were already planning to implement wayfinding signage. So a big chunk of that was wayfinding signage. So now they put the new brand on it. So technically, it wasn't really part of the brand cost. It was something they were going to do anyway, right? So, so my point is, like, I would like to drill down a little bit more deeply on that. I've heard a lot that this is a great idea, but not now. But if not now, when can we have this conversation? And, and I'm not saying, again, I'm asking for the hold so that we can engage community partners in community conversations to see if there's another way to fund this. And at the budget time, we can make a decision as we compare this and stack this up against all of our other municipal needs, if now is the time or not. That, that's all I'm asking for. By, by voting it down right now and not allowing the hold, we're essentially saying, you know what? It's really not a great idea. We're not open to that conversation. We're not, we're just not going to have it. The, the $100,000 was talked about as a rollover. I, I think it's important that, that, that O'Naitis Service Agreement money, this isn't going to be money that just rolls over into the next budget. That's already in the general fund. It's gone. So unless we do a budget amendment, that money's gone. Which, again, is why I suggested that it be part of this year's budget process, and just like anything else that is suggested, that's when it can happen. The truth is, the mayor could just automatically put this in the budget process. Maybe he will, maybe he won't, I don't know. But if he does that, we're back at square one again, and then having to do the RFP thing all over again. It's been brought up that there were no local names on this. I will tell you that I reached out to two brand agencies locally that do this, and I asked them why they did not submit, and they said because they watched this council meeting. I'm just being honest. And they said, "We, we're not going to spend the time to pull together a submission," recognizing that that's the reaction that, that it got. And, 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 you know, we talk about, obviously, taxes. People care about that. I do too. You know, one of the things I think we have to talk about, though, is if employers move out of the area because they don't have talent, that matters. And I am actively engaged in trying to keep a company here in Green Bay who is looking at another location because they don't have enough employees. They don't have enough talent. That's going to matter if they move. And then I also, measurable results, I 100% agree. I think anything needs to have measurable results. And, and I don't know that that is particularly clear to us, and I think that's another thing that's worth exploring. If, if this body chooses to hold and we choose to take this up again, I think that's something that I would ask staff over the next two months to figure out, how do we have that dialogue around measurable results? Because I do think that's important. And then the last thing that I just, because it was brought up, and I want to make sure that we're not tarnishing the reputation of really what, to me, appears to be a good quality company by the one-star rating, because I did see that as well. And it was one vote, one rating on Google reviews. And what that doesn't account for is all of the other positive ratings and reviews that I have seen about this company. So I just, I want to be careful with, with a comment like that, to make sure, again, that we're not diminishing the reputation of what is really a solid company before us today, and that we're taking a holistic approach at, at all of the work that they've done. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Alder. So we do have that motion and a second to hold this till the budget process. All in favor will signify by saying aye. A board vote has been requested.
Just give me one moment.
And Clerk, if you could just read off that vote when it appears, because I don't think I'll be able to see it from here.
All right, thank you, Alders. You may vote. Proof. Oh, to hold, sorry. Okay, that vote is six to six, with Burnett Campbell Eck Grant Morgan Weary voting no, and Galvin Hutchison Johnson Scannell Steyer Stevens voting yes.
Okay, I too will vote in favor to hold this item until the budget. With that, we are on to...
Report Q. No, Q, P, yes, thank you.
Report of the Plan Commission?
Yes, so P came after Q, didn't it?
Entertained a motion?
Yes, it did. If you would just give me one moment, please. Okay. Thank you, your honor, go ahead.
I'll entertain a motion on the report. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell.
Thank you, seconded by Alder Weary.
Seconded by Alder Weary. Any items here to be handled separately?
Mr. Morgan.
I am asking to have item two held separately and to open the floor at that time.
Item two, any others?
Yes. Three and five.
Three and five, Alder Hutchison?
Yes.
Very well. Those items will be held separately. All in favor of approving the remainder of the report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, the report has been approved with the exception of items two, three, and five. Item two, your wish is there?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Steyer. That item was pulled by Alder Morgan.
Yes.
First of all, I'm gonna abstain voting on this one, it's, I'm too involved in this, this touches my property and I have different opinions. Anyway, I have probably a half a dozen members of our neighborhood that touch this property that would like to speak, and to representatives of Gandruud that are here too that would like to either answer questions. So I make a motion, we open the floor for this.
Second.
Alder Morgan makes a motion to open the floor, that was seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, the floor is open. And again, if you could just approach the podium, when you're ready, state your name and address, and just a reminder that we allow for three minutes for public comment.
I have handouts for everyone, I've been doing a lot of research on this area, as well as contacting many of you, I got to speak with several of you, been trying to reach Dan, which I was able to have a good conversation with him just before the meeting started, so, here regarding getting ahold of Dan Maglish was, I got to speak with him today. So, my name is Brittany Ranky, and I live at 2400 Rough Court. My property is about eight foot off of being an adjoining property line to Gandruud Chevrolet. My parents live right next to that, I've lived there since I was four years old. Couple of things that I mainly wanna outline is that, we respect Gandruud, we don't want to see them from stopping from growing, we know that the city wants to be able to use that tax incremental finance district of the parcel to allow them to build on. We know that there's benefits in all directions of this. What we as a community and neighborhood is asking is that we can come to an amicable solution. Our biggest concern is that a C2 commercial highway district property has a minimum setback of 25 feet. That is just too close for comfort for our small residential neighborhood. It's a small dead-end road, quiet neighborhood. At the Plan Commission, they brought up West Mason and Military Avenue, significantly different makeup than what we have over by us. I scoured the zoning map on our city website, and I was unable to find any comparables in the city of Green Bay that have the same C2 R1 environment. There's photos of those throughout there, so I welcome any comments as you go through that. The majority of us have been here for decades, and then as the elders are leaving the neighborhood, young families are moving back in, it's, again, a very secluded, quiet neighborhood. We talk about the whole rebranding thing and wanting to keep our residents here, I feel like if we take away some of these nice, quiet, secluded neighborhoods, there's nothing keeping us there. We were attracted to this neighborhood because we don't have something right in our backyard. So maintaining that rural within the city is going to help attract people. Not everybody wants to live with neighbors peering into their backyard, whether that be a commercial district or other neighbors. So I want to address too, at the southeast property line, for the two parcels that are looking to be rezoned from C2 R1 to all C2, the hunters who are here as well, they have a berm there that Gandruud has worked with them when they built the Nissan building, there was noise pollution and light pollution, and so they worked together to have that berm in place. One of the concerns, that berm right now is about 80 feet in depth. If this rezoning happens, Gandruud continues to grow, that may not be in five years, that may not be in 10 years, but Gandruud continues to grow, there's nothing keeping that berm in place that was the solution to that noise and light pollution, which we already knew was a problem and was rectified. I just really wanna point out that we're not looking to stop this. We aren't looking to say, Gandruud, we don't want you to have your C2 parcel. I spoke with David Buck, and he said, there's only a few things we can do with that R1 strip in order to maintain what you have there, and we can't do that here tonight. So, that brings me to that next part in the handout I gave you, is that, the timeline and the timeframe that we've had here, I just, I feel like there's been some misrepresentation and misinformation for us as neighbors. Several of us...
Ms. Ranky, your time has expired, if you could conclude your comments.
Can I request for additional time, just because of the complexity of this issue? Thank you.
How much additional time?
Thank you, sir. So, when we got the, oh, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Pose nay.
So what I want to outline here is that, you know, things happen very quickly, as we know. We did receive the Plan Commission letter in the mail, the 400-foot radius. I went door knocking and spoke with 17 of our 20 houses that are immediately in that area. And all of us were informed of the Plan Commission meeting. I know of four homes that were notified of Gandruud's neighborhood meeting from their plans that they submitted to the principal planner. So I know you guys are aware that went to a neighborhood plan, or a neighborhood meeting, there was minimal people who were able to show up at that meeting. There weren't many of us who even knew that meeting was going on, and so I feel like there was some misrepresentation there. And to further that, you know, in speaking with Dan tonight, he's been great to talk to today. I've been trying to get ahold of him for several days now, since the Plan Commission meeting, without luck. And, you know, he wants to make us happy just as much as we want to allow him to continue to thrive in his business. So I guess for me, I would request that it gets sent back to Plan Commission, and maybe have some important people there who knows exactly what can happen. Because a lot of discussion that has been had is, well, this can happen, and then you talk to the next person, it's like, well, that actually can't happen, but this can happen. So having some key players in there so that everybody is on the same page, so we can maintain a safe buffer zone between our homes and the C2 commercial highway district building, and again, allow the city to get their tax incremental finance piece in mind so that we can all win in this, and we can all come to a conclusion. And if I can ask one last question, everybody who's here who has that same sentiment, could y'all please stand up? So these are a majority of the people who do line that property. And it's very important to us, for our community, for our backyards, for what we want, to be able to feel safe and heard and respected. That's where I'm at. So we would just appreciate potential of going back to Plan Commission. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for our resident?
Ask away, I'm ready, if anybody has them.
Got a question?
No.
Oh.
Go ahead, Jim.
Is the main, is the main reason you wanna negotiate this, the 25 feet? If that 25 feet was somewhat larger, would that help dissipate the concern? And what would that distance be from your standpoint?
It would be. So, that's been a lot of the talk of the neighborhood, is what number does that look like? We love what the hunters have in their backyard that Dan had placed approximately 10 years ago. From what we can see on GIS mapping, that looks like about 80 feet. So whether that means to rezone that R1 strip down to 50 feet, so that their 75-foot setback, their C2 would start at that 50 feet, that would, it would be a lot more comfortable for us. Whether that's a possibility, who knows? But I do know that according to what I've learned from David Buck, is that in order to get a variance on a C2 property, that would be for all C2 properties moving forward. So, which is why I'm requesting it to go back to Plan Commission, so that we can have further discussions and come to that cooperative decision.
Okay, thank you.
Any others? Go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. Excuse me, I'm trying to, your name again, I'm sorry.
Brittany.
Brittany, thank you for coming in. I know that you're passionate about the area. I listened in, I didn't attend the meeting in person, or I should say on Zoom, but I did listen to it today, and there were some interesting points. And I think, you know, part of it is that you've lived there a long time, you're used to the trees, for example, in their lot, even though it was on their lot. And I think there were some intangibles that you folks brought up, like, well, you know, that's too bad that they took the trees down, for example. There's also a bit of a drop-off from, you know, to, you know, you're talking about a burn, right? So if it's a drop-off, what is your take on that? I mean, if you put, is that, would that be considered part of the solution?
So the current, there's only one lot that still has any type of a berm outside of the Heather Court berm that they placed several years ago, and that berm is about three-foot rise, three to five-foot run, and then about eight to 10 feet down. So when you're talking about the possibilities of a 35-foot building right there, that's just, that's a lot. So it's still, it's still right there. When you speak to the intangibles, when I moved in there when I was four years old, there was not trees there, but there was space. I understand that businesses grow and whatnot too, so we understand that aspect of it too. It's more so that, right now, the way that the city zoned it, however many years ago I went back to, I think, 78, 1978, and it was still, it was obviously zoned before that, but there's a reason they put that 112-foot R1 buffer, that's part of the parcels of the commercial property in that location of a residential district, and it's a buffer zone. It's, I know that the city has placed the minimum requirements with the 25-foot setback in C2 commercial. Maybe those have to get relooked at, and for a C2 budding on R1 commercial, maybe 25 feet just isn't enough, and you have to go back to what that looks like moving forward. It's just a very unique scenario, there's not much out there.
What would make the neighbors happy, per se? You wanna send it back to Plan Commission, but, you know, I was looking at the map too, and it doesn't seem like a tremendous piece of property in terms of distance. So it looks like you'd like more, 75 feet possibly, or was there a number that you kinda came up with that you'd like to see?
I can't speak on behalf of everybody else, because we were told, you know, we were told that we can only speak to what's at hand zoning right here, right now. So we didn't wanna get ahead of ourselves and get into specifics of that sort, which is why we're also requesting it to go back to Plan Commission, so we can start to have those discussions with Dan and representatives from Gandruud involved as well, so that it can be something that we can come together as a group and talk about, that we haven't had the chance to do, just because of how things rolled out.
All right, thank you.
Any others?
Yes. Thank you for all your work, Brittany, and thanks for organizing your neighborhood to stick up for, you know, their rights, and getting involved in your city government. I'm gonna, I'd like to thank you for putting all this together. I lived on that side of town for a bit, so I kinda know the area as a kid, and my sisters lived at one of them dead-end roads, so I can, I kinda know about it. I have a son that lives a little further down on the same fence line. So I would like to make a motion. Oh, I can't do it, I'm sorry. I would support your request, and, and thank you for all your work. I think you've done a great amount of work, and I would favor to vote for this request.
Thanks, Alder. Any other questions?
Bill, you got any questions for me? Okay. Gotcha, okay, sorry. New to this.
Thank you, ma'am, for your testimony, appreciate it.
Hi, thank you, Brittany, that was amazing. There's two types of people in life, there's the logical people, and there's the emotional people, okay? And me and Brittany are neighbors, and you can't, I mean, you gotta have one and the other.
I'm so sorry, could you please state your name and address?
And I am emotional, I'm Katie Johnson, I live at 2406 Rough Court. I am a mom and a teacher at Preble High School, and I have lived at this location for about four and a half years now. My husband and I bought it hoping to live there for the rest of our lives. This decision is one of those decisions that's gonna choose that, decide that for us, and that breaks my heart, because I never wanted to be put in this position. We've lived in Green Bay ever since we got married at 19 and 20 years old, so it's been pretty amazing. So, the thick wooded area we watched through the sunset was cut down a matter of days with zero notice. My backyard went from being green leaves and thick tree trunks to being a parking lot with lights in 24 hours in a sea of cars. After the lack of the consideration for the families who border Gandruud, I cannot trust, if rezoned to C2, that Gandruud would give us what's needed in order to maintain the integrity of our neighborhood. What is really the right thing to do for the families on this side of the fence? And I'm asking just, I'm being asked to just trust that Gandruud's gonna be, do the right thing, and I need it, essentially what she is saying, we wanna come to an amicable decision in writing, and not be just asked that they would have what's in my best interest. So I would pose a question tonight, should it be rezoned? We understand, certainly it can be rezoned, we can give these families a 25-foot buffer, but should it be? Should an R1 butt up directly next to a C2 with only a 25-foot buffer right there, trusting that Gandruud will do right by their neighbors? The Rough Court crew, we're neighbors. Based on the signs we've had on our yard, some red, some blue, we don't vote for the same people. Some of our, some of us participate in no mow-may, other people mow their lawns like a checker pattern, okay? We know each other's names, but our kids run in and out of each other's houses, back and forth. We're not all perfectly aligned, but we're neighbors, and that means something to us. We water each other's plants, when we go on vacation, we shovel each other's driveways just because we enjoy bonfires in our courts on summer nights. We're neighborly, that is to say, we care about each other, we want what's best for one another, and it behooves us to maintain a positive and cordial relationship with people close to us. Conversely, Gandruud has operated as a business who is concerned about their profit more than a neighbor who is also a business. After purchasing the property, bordering mine and my neighbors, Gandruud came running in like the Kool-Aid man, bursting through the walls, knocked down all the trees, they did not communicate to us, I received nothing as a person who has over 100 feet of bordering right at Gandruud. I did not receive an invitation to the meeting that I just found out about tonight that happened at Gandruud. And, uh, this isn't neighborly, it demonstrates a lack of consideration for doing the right thing. I'm voicing no to the rezoning proposal for tonight. C2 is the name of the zone for a place of car sales. Between a residential and a C2 zone, it's only a 25-foot buffer. That's not enough to keep our homes feeling like they're in a neighborhood and not in an industrial park or a car lot. My counterargument isn't about the absence of trees, it's about maintaining the perimeter of our homes, to feel like homes, not a car sales place with a 57,000-square. not a car sales place with a fifty-seven-thousand-square-foot warehouse that looks like an industrial park, which is going to be a shipping factory, to maintain the integrity, the definition of a neighborhood, proposing that this decision be postponed until a contract can be formed between Ganderd and the families who border it, the neighbors. I'm not a politician. I'm a citizen grateful to practice my civic duty, and I'm willing to take part in a solution that is satisfying for all parties involved. There's a quote that says, "The activist is not the man who says the river is dirty. The activist is the man who helps clean up the river." I want to help clean up the river. Today, the vote, um, today, the vote is being made. But first, I would like to invite Ganderd to become a neighbor, to join the bonfire, to water the flowers, to look out for me as I look out for you, and to be a neighbor. Thank you.
Thanks so much for your testimony, ma'am. Any questions for our resident? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nikki Hunter, two-four-zero-six Heather Court. Um, I'm here because we have the good side of the fence. We worked really well with Ganderd when they built their Nissan dealership. They're very cooperative and very respectful of maintaining our residence to make it feel like a residence, not a park, parking lot. Um, but we really had to advocate for ourselves, and our older person at that time supported us and was, had our back, and really brought forth that we can't do this to our neighborhoods, our local east side neighborhoods. Um, and I would like to encourage you to just take that moment and reconsider C two to the R one and find a way to come to a conclusion, to table this, move it forward, so we can have some opportunity to protect that zoning that is currently in place. Because as Brittany stated, that zoning was put there for a reason, and we need to figure out what that reason is and how we can come to an amicable solution. Ganderd has been wonderful to us. We are very grateful for what you've done. I think a solution is approachable. We just need to give it time to figure it out. There's also a lot of people that have dialed in today from home, so know that they are, um, part of this. They want to be a part of this. They just couldn't be here tonight. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Any questions?
Hi, uh, my name's Eric Hunter. I'm also twenty-four-zero-six Heather Court. Nicole's my wife, and, um, I don't have nearly as much information as the first two ladies. They're doing excellent job here, but, um, I live at twenty-four-zero-six Heather Court. Um, I'm a neighbor of Ganderd and a customer. Love my Jeep Wrangler, by the way. Um, and, uh, I felt all the emotions that they felt when, um, Ganderd bought the lot behind us and built the Nissan dealership. Um, and this was, helped me out eight years ago. What is it? Ten years ago? More than my wife would like. Uh, so, uh, anyway, again, I am not here to stop, just like everybody else, I'm not here to stop any, uh, progress, uh, for Ganderd. Um, but I just want to be, uh, here to let you know that I, I went through all this. Um, I reached out to Dan. We had a good conversation. Um, and he generously built this berm, is what we have, and, um, and it has blocked, done all the things that, that they're asking for. It's blocked the light, the noise, all that stuff. Um, so I appreciate that. Um, and, uh, what else? And that's it. I'm just here to advocate for the neighborhood, um, because, um, as a whole, I just hope we can come together to work out a solution. So.
Great. Thank you, sir. Any questions?
So the thing is, if we change this zoning, too, the reason why we're here is that this zoning could mean this berm goes away for us. This wonderful compromise, let's say, ten years down the road, if we're still there, Ganderd has got an opportunity that could leave our opportunity or our compromise. And I know that they're being respectful of it, so I'm not accusing that. It's just that with this rezoning, it takes that opportunity away from us, too. Okay?
We love what we have. So thank you. Please don't take it away. I'm sorry, did you have a question?
Okay.
Alder Storey?
Um, yeah, so you had mentioned, um, that Ganderd bought it, what was it, twelve years ago or whatever it was? Who owned it prior to that, and do you know what the intentions were at that time?
It was, um, I, I don't know who owned it. I, I can't remember. I don't recall. It was just a vacant lot with a bunch of trees and, um, but, uh, it, it, when we had, went to the same meeting years ago, I, I just expressed my concerns, you know, I, I said, it, it could be worse. It could be a ten-story building or a junkyard, whatever, and I just, um, like I said, we just had some cordial conversations and talked with, I think, the contractor, and, um, that's what they worked out for us. So, and it's not just our property. There's like, I have two more neighbors. Actually, it probably extends maybe to a third neighbor, maybe not quite to your house.
There's like a three-foot parcel that goes.
Yeah, yeah. So, so it is, it, and it is wonderful. It is, it has grown naturally, and, and that, I would ask that it stays there forever. But, um, if there's something that can be done for the rest of the neighborhood, whatever that can be, we just hope there can be a solution.
Yeah, thank you.
Alder Storey?
Thank you, Your Honor. No. I can call you that. I like, Your Honor. Oh, Mr. Hunter, thank you for coming in. And you and your wife both mentioned that there is a berm there. You're very satisfied with it. You like it. I, I apologize that I did not take a ride out there to at least see that. Does anybody have a picture or anything of that? Is it in the book? All right. It's on me.
I'll say, I can put one up.
What page is that?
So I think somebody.
Yeah.
I just.
So if you look.
What page?
No, I wasn't there in person.
Page three.
Page three.
If you look at the overhead view of Andrew's lot, there's an X by where I was standing in Andrew's lot. The left photos look towards the hunters' yard where.
Oh, I see.
So, e- excuse me, so it's really important that when we have conversation in the chamber, that some, the person is speaking and speaking into the microphone for the, for posterity. But there is someone on Zoom who would like to speak.
I'm still, I'm still asking a question.
Okay.
I say, I have the berm up on video if you guys want to see it, but I can, I mean, you can kind of see it on my tone. But you can see my fence line, and the berm is probably about five, six feet above my, my fence line.
Okay, Ms. Cry, I appreciate that. Mr. Hunter is at the podium. Alder Storey is asking questions. So if we could, it's very difficult with. To sort of, uh, regulate the conversation, but if we could just stick to it, I'd appreciate it.
All right, anyway, I just wanted to ask if you really, you like the berm, and I was wondering if the neighbors have seen that and they're, have you talked to the neighbors? And are they satisfied with something like that with, you know? I'm asking you, nobody else.
Yeah, that's fine. No, I have spoken to the majority of the neighbors, and I, I, I absolutely think they would love that. I don't know that it's possible in the space, the way it's zoned, but yes, they.
You know, it seems like everybody here is very much in favor of Ganderd moving forward eventually with.
Sure.
Their development, but you're just saying that if the right things are in place, like a berm, that, that you'd be very satisfied. Okay.
It's some, some kind of buffer.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, Ms., uh, Your Honor, would you like to go to Zoom? I know that it was a little confusing there. There was some sort of back and forth here in the chambers, but it seems that there is someone who would like to speak on Zoom.
Yes. Yeah, why don't we go to Zoom if there is somebody who would like to speak? Just unmute yourself, state your name and address, and, and go ahead, and then we'll go back to the room.
Hi, uh, I'm Brad Vaughn, and, uh, I live at nine-thirty Rough Grouse Street. And, uh, I'm one of the old elders of the neighborhood, and, uh, you know, I've seen Brittany, uh, was a little girl when she first moved into the neighborhood. Now she's moving as a, as a mother and, and all the other young mothers that are coming into the neighborhood and things like that. And, uh, I'm just definitely for, uh, working with Ganderd to come up with a solution that is amicable for all of us, and that will be able to, every, both sides will be happy and be able to work together. Uh, we need some more information on what their plans are. We, there, there was no real specific plans that it's, uh, like they were saying, well, maybe this, maybe that. Nobody knows for sure, and I think that we need a little extra time to take that, that, uh, step to, uh, talk and have some dialogue with each other, so we can move forward with a solution for, that's gonna work for both of us. And, uh, I just think it's the right thing to do, because you can't really, when you have a plot map on a piece of paper, it's not really showing you, uh, it, every, uh, every section of, uh, town is unique in its own way, and businesses, uh, button up against each other. So I invite, uh, the council to come and take a look at that, too, and, and to look at it, to see what it's really like. And, and the, it's got to be something pretty dynamic to, to be able to, uh, you know, stop that, uh, the light, the noise, everything. There's times where I wake up in the, in the early morning, just even with the mall back behind, what about all the trucking coming in, all there's? There's a lot to be talked about before we further on with this, uh, with this, uh, proposal. So that's all I have to say, and thank you for your time, everyone.
Sir?
Hi, Mike Frederick, twenty-four-zero-two Rough Court, Green Bay, Wisconsin, five-four-three-zero-one. Well, my daughter Brittany did a good job, so I, and I want to try to keep this short for everybody. The rezoning, if it goes through tonight, whenever, there is nothing in there to protect anything other than, how should I say, the codes. If the berm came down, the berm came down. It's within code. If, uh, the building went twenty-five feet off the lot line, it's within code. There's no protection at all there. And I just, just want to reiterate that, re-idi, reiterate that berm factor. If it is zoned, C two. A fence, barriers are barriers, and a fence falls within the guidelines. Uh, the berm, twenty-five feet, yes. Four feet high, six feet high, whatever. It doesn't matter. If it gets rezoned from R one to C two, it's within code to take the berms out, to not put a berm, just a fence, whatever. And, and that's why I'm looking at, this is about zoning, and it needs to be revisited. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Thank you. Um, thanks for coming in. I appreciate it, and your daughter's pretty dynamic, so. Anyway, um, so it seems like, from your understanding, it seems like that there's some fear that if this rezoning goes through the way it goes through, that some of these things, and some other folks mentioned that, too, that it might be a problem, that some, this, this berm might go away and that type of thing. Has anybody talked, has any, any of the neighbors talked to the folks at Ganderd and actually talked to them about that?
Yes.
And what was their response that you know of?
Well, the buffer only has to be a fence or?
Well, we will be talking to Ganderd folks, too, in a little bit. So, but I, I just wanted to hear it from your standpoint, if, if the neighbors have talked to Ganderd.
Yeah, I did myself, because I was one of the only.
And that's your concern.
Two that went because of the lack of letters going out to the residents.
All right. That's what I did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Is there anyone else on the Zoom who would like to speak to our council?
I'll let the Zoom people go first. Okay.
Appreciate that, yeah.
Yes, go ahead. Thank you in the room.
Hi.
Yeah, go ahead.
My name is Faith Ainsworth. I live at nine-two-zero Rough Grouse Street. I am right next to, uh, Brad Vaughn, who is right, uh, he's our next-door neighbor. Um, we've been at nine-two-zero Rough Grouse almost three years now. Um, and it was a very big blessing that we got to come into this neighborhood. Um, one of the biggest things that, it was interesting entering into this meeting, and we're wondering what's gonna keep people in Green Bay, is we need to make people care about people. So I have young children. Um, I've noticed things such as my one son's, uh, back window. I look through it at night, and actually, the lights are so bright that they do shine in already. Um, we have a bi-level, but because we're set up higher, um, it makes it one of those things where I had to put dark blackout shades and things like that. Um, you have noticed an increase in noise. I am for economic growth. I think it's a fantastic thing. I am a business owner myself, and I'm, think that a lot of neat things are able to come in Green Bay. But if we stop being about people and meeting people where they're at, situations like this, people aren't gonna want to stay. Like, and like my neighbors also stated, like, this was gonna be like our forever home. If I have to deal with the increased noise and floodlights coming into my backyard, is it really a place where I want to stay to raise my family? And the thing is, is I do love it, because the thing is, is I can go and, my boys, every time they see Brad, my neighbor, they run out and they're like, Brad! Um, and you don't get that in communities anymore. Um, the, on the other hand, though, as a business owner, I understand, and I do want to come up with a solution that can be, we can work together to mutually come up with something. Because if this gets rezoned tonight, um, what's gonna, it's, it's just gonna get pushed through. The same thing when I attended with, uh, East Town Mall meeting. It got rezoned to where actually we could have a vinegar factory right now there. Um, I don't know anybody that really wants to live with a vinegar factory in their yard, but there was no protections put in place for us as citizens. But we also like to keep these nice little neighborhoods where it's not necessarily, necessarily like the suburbs, where if you go a few streets down, it does look like that. And we really would like to, um, protect that, where we can keep that and raise our fa- families. Um, yeah, that's about what I have at this point, so.
Thanks for your testimony, ma'am. Any questions? All right. Thanks again.
Matt Hyros, twenty-four-eleven Grouse Court. First of all, thank you all for, uh, your time and dedication serving, uh, the City of Green Bay residents. Without you, we really wouldn't have a city, so I appreciate your time and, uh, service. I'm also very thankful to have, uh, great neighbors, and, uh, I feel like I'm a good neighbor, and, uh, Ganderd's been a good neighbor, and I want that to continue. So what I request is, uh, um, that you put yourself in our shoes, our houses, um, in your consideration of how you're gonna vote tonight. Um, if you feel you have all the answers, uh, that you can forward this or approve, then so do so. But if you have any doubt, um, I just request that you refer it back to the planning commission for further review. So just a few questions to ask yourself. Um, you know, how will this rezoning decision impact adjacent residential property values? Uh, how will this impact, uh, let's see here, adjacent residential neighborhood? The, the character of the residential neighborhood? There has been a little bit of a precedent set, uh, twelve years ago, when the b- berm and, uh, things were installed in the southern end of the property. Um, so not saying that a berm is the answer, because with a berm, that can create drainage issues and things like that. But once again, as many of the, my neighbors have mentioned, just a buffer of some sort, whether it's a berm or just a greater separation with vegetation and plantings, uh, that's something that, you know, hopefully can be, uh, discussed in greater detail at the planning commission. Also, uh, you know, basically, I don't know, you know, if everybody's, you know, positive of what that C two zoning allows. Um, if you're not, I would say, don't, uh, vote for this, because, you know, we're at the mercy, once it's rezoned, at whatever that C two, uh, zoning allows. And, uh, so it's just something seriously taken into consideration. And I guess, yeah, finally, you know, just, uh, you know, if you can't, you know, answer all the questions, uh, that I threw out there with confidence, I just ask that, uh, you refer it back, um, you know, for further discussion and, uh, ideas as far as a, uh, separation from R one to C two. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Sam Johnson. I live at two-four-zero-six Rough Court. Um, I just want to echo the concerns that my wife and my neighbors have brought up, and I want to reiterate the importance of a buffer of greater than twenty-five feet to the building being built and our property lines. Uh, privacy and comfort is of high value to me and my neighborhood, and I strongly, strongly urge you to reconsider the rezoning. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lori Frederick, twenty-four-zero-two Rough Court. Brittany is my daughter. I'm very proud of her. Um, when I went to the meeting at Ganderd, there was four of us there, two couples. That was it. And I was a little bit upset that other neighbors weren't there. And I was a little bit upset that other neighbors weren't there. Come to find out later, they weren't invited. There was no letter going out to them, I think it was just four of us that received that letter. I'm a little different than my daughter, I'm more like Katie, where I get emotional. I've been there for twenty-nine years, I raised Brittany there, and now my grandchildren are being raised right next door. It's all about the zoning, about that buffer. Last night, I think there were airbags being blown up or something. At Ganderd, it was boom, 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 it was, and before that, honest to God, with all those trees there, and I know, at the meeting, Dan had said, somebody put a fence up on my lot, and I'm like, that's us. Because when we first moved in, on that berm, we put a fifty-foot fence, and we lined it with lilacs to block out the noise and the light, and it worked great. Now, if we don't have that buffer, and that fence that they're talking about that gets put up, that's going to be below that hill, it's going to be below our house line. So we're still going to see it, that's not going to help us. So it's basically all about the rezoning and to help us out. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Janet Angus, fourteen oh-three Shirley Street, Green Bay. I live on the west side of town. And you know, what I'm hearing from all these people here tonight is they only got notice, only four people were at the Neighborhood Association meeting. You, as our council and our representatives, need to do something about this notification process that the city goes through with the Planning Committee. Because you know why? Neighbors don't get notified. I've had the same problem on the other side of town. Chris Weary can tell you about it. We've had, we've had arguments about it, because I was not notified about certain things that happened. You have to look at this, four hundred feet, how many yards is that? That's not even a half of a football field, is it? Is it? Guess I did my math wrong, but... It's not a whole lot of footage for neighborhoods that this is going to affect. Good, bad, or indifferent, people need to be notified. When it's affecting their properties, their lives, they need to have notifications so they can have input, especially when a big rezoning thing is going through. I've had it happen to me on the west side, and I beg you to look at this notification process. It goes through what? You get a postcard in the mail, maybe? And then you get, you have to go through your Neighborhood Association? If you have one? If you have people who are even there? This has to change. All these people here, they needed more notification. You just can't keep pushing things through when it affects people's property values and their lives. This is their lives, this is where they live, this is where people grow up. Please do something about this. And listen to these people here, I think they did a great job, and I commend them for coming in tonight.
I'd like to thank Brittany, because, sorry. In this, I'd like to, I would actually like to thank Brittany, because she is actually the one that gave us the most notification and education than anything we had received. We've, like I said, we've gotten other things, and it just keeps getting pushed through, like the person had said, but if we don't have neighborhoods like that, where we're getting proper education on what's going on, that's where it can be, because, like, we're young families. For me to show up here tonight, meant I had to put my business stuff on hold, and I'm about to open something that's going to be great for the city. So, when you have to do that, and it's not prioritizing people.
Alright, is there anyone else who would like to speak?
There's one more person, ma'am.
Michael Product, seventeen forty-four, Beaver Dam Drive. I just wanted to respond to another one of the comments that was made about Neighborhood Associations and how notifications go out. Neighborhood Associations do not send out notifications on behalf of the city for public meetings. Sometimes the city will ask us to entertain a group that's wanting to come into the neighborhood, boundaries. However, the Neighborhood Associations, I just wanted to clarify, are not the ones responsible for notification processes or sending out letters to residents, so, thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion to close the floor.
I have my name tag on here, but I'm, uh... Dan Mangliss, representing Ganderd, nine-nineteen Auto Plaza Drive, Green Bay. I just want to say, we're all homeowners here, we got a commercial, we got it there. We worked with the hunters, well, that didn't come from a meeting on zoning, that came through the planning area of it. So, when it comes to planning, the city approves, disapproves lighting. I heard comments that we mowed down a forest, there was a bunch of scrub brush there, we had a homeless issue there, we had, the police were called on that, and before I did anything, I called our alderman Bill, which he can testify to that fact, where I told him, hey, you know, we're going to be cleaning this out, anything. I didn't hear, oh my God, no, don't, don't do that, so, you know, wasn't careless, without a thought, as far as taking those trees down. I did make a call with the alderman involved in it, and told him what was going on. You know, we're sensitive to their deeds, we want it there. You know, the berm has been in place a long time, we assume no reason to change that. We want their privacy there, we just feel that that comes in the planning stage. So, I mean, any other questions for anybody?
Do you want to ask? Do you want to go first?
I want to go first.
Go first.
Sorry. So you'd like to see the, the zoning get passed tonight? And that all the issues that have been brought up, they would be taken care of at the planning phase? That there's...
That's why we did it with, with the other project.
Right, and that's what I was going to be asking staff about that as well. I, I thought that, I'm not sure that it's appropriate to do this at the zoning phase. I don't know if there's any legal binding way to do that or anything, I think it comes in the planning part, so...
Yeah, when I talked to the City Planning Commission, that's what they made it sound like. They said zoning is here, and then, you know, they approve and what we can do and what we can't do.
Right.
I think, you know, history sometimes speaks louder than words, too. You know, we've, we've had issues with neighbors, we've solved them from PA systems to the kind of lights we have, to the, to the berm. We've, you know, been good neighbors there for a long time.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you, thanks for coming in, Dan. Interesting issue, and it seems to me that, that you have talked to the neighbors in the past. What, what is your take on some of the neighbors not understanding that there was a meeting?
Well, Kevin here, you sent out, I don't know if he's got to come up to comment, but he's the one that sent out the letters, so...
Okay, well, I'd like to stay up there, too. Yeah, and I'll write your name and address, I guess, for the record.
I am Kevin Pavanca, I am at four-thirty-three Hoganland Circle in Sibiski, representing Ganderd at nine-nineteen Auto Plaza Drive. The letter, we, we sent out a letter that was, an address list provided, I believe it was by the Planning Commission, that said, these are the people within the circle that you have to notify of, a generalized idea of what your plans are, if you were to rezone. A lot of that was, you know, if, you, you've got to show it like, it could go to code, so... Thirty-five feet, twenty-five foot setbacks. Realistically, and you know, we can kind of attest, we have our builder here as well, too. Oh, yeah, it was like thirty-seven letters that was sent out. We had it just on company letterhead, about, together, to the post office together at the same time, in the same package, say, hey, mail these out.
We sent them on first class.
Yeah, so, because it was, there was probably like, between the times, I don't have the exact specifics, but by the time we got that list, it was like two days later of one, like, you know, here's the list of the thirty-seven people you have to mail it to, here's the addresses. It has to be postmarked within two days, so it was just...
Okay, so the letter that was sent out, was that before the Planning Commission sent out letters, in your estimation?
Yeah, that was before our, I...
You had a, another meeting?
Yeah, we had a meeting prior to the Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. Alright.
About three to four weeks ahead of that.
So with that being said, you know, the zoning is one thing. When it's zoned, you know, it's just kind of an overall, yes, this is what it's going to be, and there's any number of potential uses that can happen over a period of time. So they talked tonight about a berm, you know, that the berm near Heather Court is a really nice feature.
Yeah.
And some of the other neighbors said they would be very happy if, if something like that was put in place, so... You know, the thing is, you could get this rezoning, and you wouldn't have to do any of that, per se. You could put up a fence, or you could do whatever. What is your intention? Did you have an intention on that, or is that too early to ask?
My intention, no, we want to protect the neighbors' privacy. Some berm and a, and a fence combination there. You know, and the last time I was here, I think we expanded our body shop, and we're on a curb there, we're hard, hard to tell the visibility. And one of the council members said, hey, you know what, we're going to grant him this, and he's going to park cars on this curb. I don't know if that person is still on the committee or not, but it's probably ten to twelve years later. I have never parked a car on that curb, even though, you know, technically, it's blacktop, it's on our property. They wanted me to take this part of the parking lot. Wish we had some guys here from our body shop, I screamed, yell, everybody parks there. Because I gave my word that that's what I'm going to do.
Is this time, is this a time-sensitive project for you?
Uh, for us, yeah, we'd like to get the concrete in, and most of it, start, start working on it.
So, like I said, it's a trust matter, you know, if you get this rezoning, and then the neighbors would be trusting that you would do that, that, it's kind of like a little roll of the dice, but if your word is your word, you know? So we have to kind of weigh that, so...
Well, and we have some history with it, too. We've worked with the hunters, and that was in the, you know, in the planning phase of it, there was no zoning involved there. Our Nissan building was way off the border, but...
I think there, there's a fear that, talking about a thirty-five-foot building too, coming in, and, you know, the worst-case scenario, but, you know, it sounds like you might be talking about readjusting that, and you don't have a site plan yet for that.
No, that's not a...
You have a site plan?
Yeah, so, one of the current buildings we have to take down is actually at the thirty-five-foot mark as well, too. Obviously, this one's going to be bigger, closer, that whole works as well, too, but like, it's... You know, it's, I, I don't want to say, a, a lot of it is hung up on, like, you know, we were so back and forth dealing with, I don't want to say it that way, but dealing with the city of, you know, what kind of fence can you put in? What kind of trees can you put in? What kind of buffer can you put in? There's so much back and forth, like, yeah, go ahead and get this fence and get these trees and make a nice borderline, and get, you know, evergreens planted so it can grow completely tight to make it look perfectly good. And then, you know, you get, you get told a couple of weeks later, nope, cancel it, you can't put those trees in, you can't do that because it's residential, you got different height regulations, you can't put so much stuff in and out close to it, so... That was where it kind of seemed like, from our, our understanding, is it seemed like our hands are more tied with the planning phase until the zoning phase is taken care of.
Right.
I know that may not be presented that way, and, you know, like I said, we got mixed
It's a process.
Answers all the way through, but it seemed like that was, that was a process we were told in our, to follow, is you got to get zoning before you can finalize anything else up.
You know, and if I remember the planning phase, we're here again with a group of people saying yes or, or no.
Okay, that's all I have, thanks, thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Mangliss, for coming, I think, can all agree, you know, it's a great neighborhood back there, right? And, and you're a great company, I mean, probably all of us have been there at one point or another, you do a great job over there, and we hope you grow and succeed. And it sounds like you want to get working on your project this year yet. Would two weeks put much of a dent in that so that we can maintain a, you know, a great relationship?
Depends on the weather, and I don't know what can be accomplished in two weeks. You know, we have ordinances and zonings.
Certainly.
I mean, it took us, how long to just... Get here tonight? You know?
I understand, I think, you know, two weeks to maintain that great relationship, you know, between the, your business and the neighborhood would be well, you know, time well spent. I don't know if you're aware...
You'd be happy when we're, we're doing it, I mean, I know it's...
Well, there's always a happy middle ground, you know, I, I don't know if you're aware, if twenty percent, I believe, of residents who are adjacent to a land being rezoned sign a petition, then it requires a seventy-five percent vote at council. And it sounds like that's probably achieved, so that would mean, you know, if, if it all checks out, that you would need nine of twelve here on council to approve a rezoning. So, i- it's our interest really to protect that neighborhood, but also, also to see that you succeed. So if we can send this back, and if you can find a mutual resolution, that would be preferable to us saying yes or no.
But there's nothing we can do, in my eyes. All my conversations with the city are, you know, it has to be...
And I understa- I understand, and in this, we'll have that deeper discussion when we get back here, but I, I was just wondering, that two weeks, I think that's something that could be in the interest of the great area you live in, of, of working on it.
I mean, as long as you promise me that...
I can't promise anything.
If you've got a resolution in two weeks, then I just, you know...
I, I appreciate it, thank you, that's, that's all I got, thanks.
It, it seems to me we're kind of getting the cart in front of the horse, asking you to wait two weeks. And I guess, if we could just take a quick timeout here and ask the people who have the answers to this, what comes first here? When, 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 when?
Should we do that?
Well, but we're asking him to commit to waiting two weeks. What if he doesn't have to wait two weeks? What if we can get this all solved by passing it tonight, and then getting it to the committee it's got to go to? So I'm asking, what is the order before we put this guy on the spot? And make him commit to something that makes no sense? Well, i- i- I get that part, but if we make it go back to planning, and, and this isn't done at planning, if it's done at zoning, then he wastes...
Alder Galvin, Alder Galvin, if we could just dispense with the, the public input phase of this, and then we can direct questions to staff.
Alright, thank you, and I, I appreciate everything you guys have done, for your neighbors.
Yes.
Can I speak one more time, just based on the questions?
If you would please come to the podium.
Hold on, am I good to go? Okay, okay. So just to speak to, two, two quick things, that, that berm that's being spoken of is in the R one residential zone right now. So, that can go away at moment's notice, once it gets zoned C two. So yes, they have been amicable, they have been good neighbors. Eric and, and Nicole have spoken very highly through that process. But right now, they can't do anything on that hundred-and-twelve-foot space, so when they dug up the, the area there, push the dirt back, put the, the berm there, that's an amicable solution in that area. Now, if they can use that space in a C two manner, they don't need to be amicable in that position. So, I don't want to say they were forced to do that, they weren't forced to do that, they could have left it flat, but they had no other use for it at the time. It's currently R one, you cannot put even a parking lot on an R one residential district. In order for a commercial sales of auto sales, it has to be C two. So, I think from, from that aspect, well, yes, we are very grateful that you've been a good neighbor. Again, that's word of mouth, and that can change at moment notice, and that is one of our concerns. The other piece that I wanted to speak to was about having it go forward tonight, in speaking with David Buck, is that their understanding, Ganderd's understanding is that it has to go through planning. And while, yes, they have to submit their plans, planning is only looking at those minimum setbacks. He is only looking at twenty-five-foot offset, thirty-five-foot tall building. He's not going to come back to us residents and say, is this okay with what you guys want? That's what tonight is about. Tonight is about ensuring that we have that buffer space, and I think buffer can be used in a lot of different ways, but that space, for lack of a better term, between our very small residential, low-density, very low-traffic space, and a C two highway commercial parcel. So, that is what we're here to talk about tonight, it's not to talk about the plans. I have the building plans here that show, you know, the twenty-foot, twenty-five-foot, the retaining wall, or the retaining pond, the loading dock, everything that they already sent to David. I have that right here, if anybody wants to look at it, or if anybody has questions about it. This isn't what we're talking about tonight. This is worst-case scenario, this is what could happen without our knowledge of it happening. This is what we are concerned about, is that if this goes through zoning tonight, we aren't notified, just like we weren't notified, that the trees were coming down. A phone call to someone just other than our elder would be appreciated. None of us knew the trees were coming down. The thirty, the, the name of thirty-five people that the letter went out to, I know of two people, and like I said, I went to seventeen houses, and only two of them received that letter. So, here's a word-against-word piece. What do we do? We're looking at R one low-density residential to C two highway commercial. And we need to consider that space.
We, we've received a lot of great input from you in particular, so I think, I think we're probably ready to close the floor, if, if you don't have anything final to add.
Thank you. I think Mark has a question, or...
Yes, I do. Sorry. Thank you. Brittany, thanks again. You know, one of the issues that might come up is if this rezoning is denied, that there's always a chance that they could come back with a conditional use type of setup. And those are very tricky, because if we deny a conditional use permit, or if it's overthrown in any way, we could be sued. So, there's any number of things to look at, so I don't know. Have you thought about that?
I know that, and correct me if I'm wrong in what you're asking, but I do know that there have been two other plans put to the principal planner. One was a fifty-five-plus senior housing in that parcel, prior to it being sold to Gandrewd. One was an assisted-living facility. As residents of our neighborhood, we were told it was low-income housing. When you think of low-income housing in Green Bay, you don't think of a fifty-five-plus facility. You don't think of assisted-living facilities. So, you know, there's been other considerations of that conditional use, C1 conditional use. It still has that R1 buffer. It still has to come to this committee in order to even put a duplex on that R1 buffer. So, R1 loaded residential is significantly different than R2 and R3. It's significantly different than C1. So, it just needs, there has to be some type of resolution in that space.
I just wanted to mention that other alternatives may come up. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks again.
Your honor, I think there's one more member of the public would like to speak.
Okay.
Hello, Jim Tice, on behalf of Gandrewd Auto Group, 919 Autoplaza Drive. I just want to kind of clarify a few things that appear to be a little bit misleading.
What's your name?
Jim Tice.
Oh, Jim Tice. Okay, cool.
So, there's no, I have some photos. I don't have enough for everybody that they want to share. So, just to clarify a few things, kind of played devil's advocate a little bit. So, we all understand, again, the city has ordinances and codes put in place for reasons. So, as we talked about during the zoning meeting last Monday, they used to have a hundred-to-one-hundred-and-fifteen-foot setbacks, but they didn't require any trees, whatever have you. They just needed a setback between commercial and residential. Over time, the city planners, engineers came to a compromise or a solution between these different residential-commercial areas, came up with a solution. Twenty-five-foot setback, you can go up to eight-foot-high, or go with an eight-foot-high fence, maximum building height thirty-five feet. So, in any, not just Gandrewd in this, you know, in this particular, but anybody could come to this meeting, or be a business owner, and come in, meet the ordinances that you guys put in place, it's actually a city thing, and be denied. So, it's not, in my opinion, it's not the applicant's issue. If this is not acceptable to neighbors, which, again, I'm not saying is right or wrong, it needs to be brought up to the city, then. The city has an issue with their codes and ordinances. If that's going to be insufficient to neighbors, then, I mean, right now, the applicant's the one that's actually feeling the repercussions. So, I just wanted to bring that up, as far as seventy-five feet to a hundred feet, that's, you know, again, they have a hundred-and-twelve-foot right now. It was brought up about the trees, and with all due respect, I mean, as you'll see in the photos, all of the trees that are in, that were cut down, are actually, they were sparse. They were indeed trees, so I'm not denying that, but they were not full-grown. It wasn't like a forty-acre woods that was behind them. It was just trees. The property is also ten to twelve feet lower than their house. So, a lot of those trees that were currently there, I'm not saying all, but the good majority of them, were not high enough to actually get up and above over what their current fence would be. Current fence is allowed to go eight-foot maximum. Gandrewd was planning on putting a six-foot fence in until the neighborhood meeting, where we agreed, you know, that was a concern to them, to the neighbors, of having enough height to get that blockage. So, we agreed to put an eight-foot fence, or agreed that we would do an eight-foot fence to the opacity that the city requires, which is ninety percent. So, we agreed to do that, plus, again, you're ten to twelve-foot lower. You take those two, you add them up. It's over half of the building height. Half of the thirty-five-foot building height is already covered because of how much lower it's going to be built on, and the eight-foot-high fence, which is currently higher than any of the fences that they have. So, moving on, knocking down all the trees without notice, again, it's their property. They can certainly do that. But just, again, with the photos that I just wanted to show you, all of the photos in and around there are all the trees. You can clearly see they're fully green. The trees that are in within that area, they're like half-dead. There's not much green, if any, green on them. So, yes, they were cut down, but I think it's a little bit misleading when they're saying, you know, like, they almost knocked down a forest, and now you can see, like, the light and everything like that. So, it is a little misleading, and I just wanted to point that out. Not that it's wrong, or not that it's right, not that it's wrong. I just wanted to point that out, that I don't think the pitch was fully clear in giving to you guys. So, again, if the cities were to send this back for two weeks, they talk about it, I mean, what, again, it brings that point up. Is it a applicant issue, or is it a city issue? Because if we're meeting the criteria that's set in place by the city, and it gets denied, what does that actually say or mean for not only this development, but future development within the city of Green Bay? And it was brought up, again, on last Monday, if they were to say you need to leave the berm or leave the residential in place, there's nothing to say Gandrewd, again, from the beginning of the time, Gandrewd's been really, really good to all the neighbors, willing to work with them. But if the zoning does not get approved right now, there's nothing to stop Gandrewd, then, from basically cutting down all the trees, which you'll see at the top of that berm in their backyard, cutting those down, staying a hundred, keeping it residential, and then building right on that, on the current residential-commercial line that they own. So, it could certainly be worse. So, in this situation, Gandrewd has agreed and is more than willing to work with the neighbors, as they have in the past. There's been nothing to this date, prior to this meeting, of any different, you know, any issue. And we said during the last, in the last meeting, we did the worst-case scenario, which is just to show it on paper, because that's what the city actually has in place. That's not to say that we're not willing to work with them as we go through the next step, which is site plan review. This is strictly zoning, which the city, actually, in talking to Joe Buck and John, they had want, again, the city actually has it in their plan to be C2 in that area. So, we're trying to comply with what you guys already have on your maps. Again, as far as the letters going out, again, we did the checklist. We did everything we can. I know, like I said, I didn't personally send them out. Kevin did, but it's hard to believe that he wouldn't have sent out all the letters that were on that list. So, there should have been thirty-seven letters that were indeed sent out. The other issue was the current fence. They had said it would be worse than what they currently have now. Again, I just wanted to reiterate, the fence that we're proposing is, if not double, you know, for sure, two to four feet higher than what the highest fence on that property line is, as we speak. So, again, in closing, Gandrewd has always been a good neighbor. We want to work with the neighbors, work with the city, so everyone's happy. Again, but we want to reiterate, we're just going by the codes and ordinances that you guys have set in place.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions for our guests?
Yes, there is one from Mr. Weary.
Thank you. Alder Weary has a question. It is, Mr. Tice, I appreciate you being here today. What is your title with Gandrewd?
Project Executive.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thanks. Thanks for coming to answer questions.
All right. Entertained a motion to close the floor?
Excuse me, your honor. There's one more member of the public who'd like to speak.
I just have one thing to say, one more thing to say. You haven't sat in my backyard to see that you, with the trees gone, it's... I mean, I know it's his property. He can do what he wants with it. But I don't like it when somebody tells me what I can see from my backyard when you have not sat on my deck to see what's in my backyard. When I sit on my deck, all I could see was greens. I saw all the tops of those trees, what they call scrub brush or what have you. It totally grew up beautiful in the last twenty-nine years. It blocked out the lights. It blocked out the noise. So, I don't like it when somebody tells me that they know what I can see from my backyard. Come and sit on my deck and take a look at it, and then you can talk about it. Thank you.
Motion to close the floor?
Unfortunately, there's one more person coming.
Unfortunately, Katie Johnson. I wanted to show you guys a picture. I have it here, and that's all I'm going to do, is show you a picture of what we're talking about. Again, this isn't so much a fight of the trees. As much as it is, we're thinking about zoning, right? So, here's a picture of the trees before, and a picture of the trees after. So, you can imagine a fifty-seven-thousand-square warehouse right behind my house, and this is why we're concerned about the zoning here. We want to ensure that these feet, which is a zoning walk between my house and the warehouse, is more than twenty-five feet. And we cannot do that unless it gets postponed tonight, from my understanding, before, after. So, I have a clear view now of Gandrewd. Again, you haven't sat in my backyard. I have probably a hundred feet of that.
So, I'm so sorry, and forgive me for saying unfortunately, though I misspoke, but we can't hear you if you're not at the podium.
Okay. That's okay. The picture speaks a thousand words. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Now, entertain a motion? Motion to close the floor has been made by...
Galvin and Stevens?
Alder Galvin, seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was his name? The guys have it. The floor is closed. Before we get to comments from Alders, I was hoping that Director Steck-Schulte might be able to enlighten us a little bit in terms of what is possible if this were to be referred back to our plan commission.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Certainly, the statement is incorrect. The matter that is before this council tonight is... Okay. The item that is before this council tonight is the actual zoning of the property. So, the actual site plan review does not actually happen until the zoning has been established, clearly, if there's being a change to the zoning. So, while there has been a concept plan that I believe has been distributed in packets, that is not an absolute, an actual proposed site plan at this point. There has been no staff review of a formal site plan submitted at this point. So, to be clear, the use is what is actually up before this body at this point. So, to delay, certainly refer this back to plan commission, that certainly would not change that particular issue. Any sort of, I guess, considerations or agreements that could happen between the, both parties certainly could be evaluated as part of that, and certainly would be something that could be certainly considered, but is not a direct impact on the zoning itself. But it certainly would be something, I guess, that would certainly be, open the opportunity to have that agreement in place. It is not something that certainly has the existing, I think the comments have been made. Certainly, staff's review is comparing it to the adopted rules and codes that are in place and adopted that. So, it is certainly a minimum standard. If there was additional consideration that the applicant would wish to consider through an agreement with the neighbors, that certainly could be incorporated, but not from a regulatory standpoint, we do not have the ability, as, without certainly amending the actual ordinances. If it was rezoned to the newer district, that twenty-five-foot setback would be the minimum requirement that would be needed. So, there is, there could be the opportunity to go back to refer it to, I think, would be to certainly, I guess, revisit the setback and perhaps, you know, that particular requirement, if there's anything else that can be done from a landscape example, but that would have to be largely done in an agreement between property owners, I think, at this point. So, the site plan review, we could certainly take a look at those things and have that under consideration, but it is not something that is really, I guess, directly germane to the zoning question at this current time.
Okay. Thank you, Director. Questions for Director Steck-Schulte from our Alders?
So, we do have the authority at the site. If we go forward with the zoning, then when it comes to the site plan, I mean, they just can't do anything. That does have to be gone through, and we will have, how shall we say, authority, some say, on that as going forward?
Essentially, it would be, assuming it meets the criteria of the new zoning district, it would be a staff-level review to approve or not approve what is being submitted.
So, I want to be clear on this. I'm a new Alder. I'm on the plan commission, so I'm right in the middle of all this. It's my understanding, if the zoning is approved, and this is the concern of the neighbors, that if Gandrewd makes a plan and it doesn't trip over any of our minimum requirements, it's good to go. They could build right up to that twenty-five-foot offset. They could build it thirty-five feet high and all that. So, the review process isn't going to ensure the neighbors' concerns. It's just going to ensure the minimum zoning requirements for a property.
That is correct.
Okay. So, is there any way, and this, I'm ignorant, is there any way, as a common council, we can put into... I know the answer is probably no, but if we approve this zoning, can we put in a special condition, or is it simply a yes or no?
I would certainly, Attorney Bunger, to correct me if I'm wrong in saying this, but zoning, standard zoning, rezoning cannot be conditionally approved. It is either, it either meets the standard, or it does not. So, essentially, I think the choice before the council would be to either, certainly to approve the zoning, approve the rezoning, to deny the rezoning, or to refer it back to the plan commission for additional consideration.
Okay. Just a follow-up question. Is it possible for the grantee, or the property owner who wants the zoning change, can they publicly say, I think the concern was eighty-foot setback. Can they publicly say they will agree to an eighty-foot setback? I know it has nothing to do with the zoning, but it has everything to do with the people in the neighborhood. Can they publicly say that they'll do that as part of an agreement? Or, and if they're mum on it, then the concern of the neighbors is pretty valid? Is that possible for them to just, you know, they can say anything, but if they say that publicly, would that hold water?
I don't believe there would be anything from a regulatory standpoint, from the city's position, that would be able to enforce something like that. So, it would probably need to be a private agreement between the property owners.
Thank you.
Next, we have Alder Brunet.
Thank you, Director Steck-Schulte. These are tough issues, right? We have neighbors who don't agree with other neighbors, what their plans are. We have a business that is looking to expand because it's good for them, good for their customers, good for the city. We're talking about rebranding and all that stuff. This is a tough issue. But from your perspective, as a city director, has Gandrewd gone through all of the proper channels and all of the proper communications to bring this plan forward worthy of an approval?
To the best of our knowledge, Alder, yes, they have, at this point. I know there is the question about the notice issuing, but I guess certainly staff provides that list, in terms of through our office, we provide that mailing list. So, but we do not actually, city staff does not actually pursue, and we don't have any direct method of confirming that they've actually been out other than hearing from the neighborhood, in terms of whether or not those have actually been received. So, there is certainly some trust factor on that. There is a requirement, the requirement mailing factor that the city does directly do is directly related to the public hearing, which was actually issued and mailed from the city offices here. And I believe that the comment was that it seemed like that was certainly received by most of the residents at the plan commission hearing level, but...
Okay. All right, thank you, Director.
Next, we have Alder Eck.
Alder Eck, go ahead. And then, I'm sorry, could somebody flip the camera around for me, just so I can view the council as well? Thank you.
Okay, yeah, you've been busy. Okay, yeah, so my question would be to the director. Sorry, I have a hard time with your last name, so you know who I'm talking to. Steck-Schulte?
Perfect.
Okay, I did say it. All right. Is, when would that negotiation process happen, as far as trying to, you know, have the neighbors look at what the plan is, and so approval process? When in the stages would that be a possibility?
I think really that could happen at any time, Alder Eck. Certainly, that could be right now, that discussion. I think ideally, that discussion would have hopefully been somewhat farther along at this point, I think, in an ideal situation. But certainly, any time up through the site plan review, again, but, you know, I think the question that was raised, you know, certainly the time at this point, the zoning is an important step, because it does certainly dictate... uh, because it does certainly dictate the terms by which staff will be evaluating the site plan in the future. So anyway, if there is no change in the zoning, we could evaluate the site plan based on the current zoning, the, the C one and the R one rules that are in it right now. Uh, but then if it, if it's, obviously if it changes to C two, uh, the point is that those, those existing standards under the, the adopted C two zoning are the standards by which staff would be making the comparison. So certainly there is a, a validity to the point of whether or not, uh, the zoning does matter at this point. So in terms of wanting to see if there's some additional time to perhaps, if council's not fully comfortable granting the rezone, referring it back to the plan commission would be a reasonable, uh, position to try to take this, to allow some additional time for that agreement to occur.
Thank you.
Next we have Alder Johnson and then Alder Weary.
Alder Johnson, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, Director Steck Schulte, um, you know, I just, I, I kinda wanna go back to the notification piece again. It seems highly unusual to me that we would make a, an applicant do the mailing, uh, for that. Can you, and, and, and part of why I wanna ask that is because it's fresh right now, but also I wanna contemplate whether or not it makes sense for us to consider a change of policy on that.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Uh, certainly Alder, like I said, again, the way our ordinance is set up and our procedures are right now, that mailing happens directly from city staff at the public hearing level. Um, generally speaking, in terms of, uh, the neighborhood meeting that was held on that, that is generally not an official requirement, but staff did, uh, basically strongly encourage, essentially required it uh, as an additional step in this particular case because of the proximity of the two different zones on this. Uh, but as it was not a simply staff requirement, we, we provided the mailing list, but we did not do the mailing directly.
So the reality is if we didn't do that mailing, meaning Ganderud didn't do that mailing, we wouldn't even be talking about it and we would be looking at the notice that was sent for the public hearing.
Correct.
Which which did go out through the official city channel.
Correct.
Okay, so it was kind of like an extra add-on. Uh, and we did meet our, uh, radius requirement on the notification.
That is correct.
Uh, I know that there's typically a minimum standard set by state, uh, did we meet that minimum standard or did we exceed it?
I believe that our city procedures exceed that notice requirement, I, I believe.
Okay. Uh, the zoning code, so the, the Z, uh, excuse me, C two, right? So that's what's being requested here. Uh, is that the only zoning code that permits, uh, the use of a car lot?
Uh, it's sort of an existing, uh, for the level of intensity of uses for like outdoor storage, which is essentially considered what a car lot would be, that C two would be the appropriate district.
Okay, uh, and so, so really, at the end of the day, I mean, if we do a refer back or a hold, the ordinance dictates what, what's within that, so there's really no negotiation to be had. Uh, it just, I, I mean, if it comes back, it's either we, we rezonate or not, which is the decision that's before us today.
Yeah, and I think certainly the, the existing situation with the, uh, the R one strip of zoning that is there, it, it existing, there's some logistical issues in terms of implementation that, that, that sort of split zoning in a parcel, those critical staff's preferences certainly to have one zoning per parcel. Uh, that has been used in other cases to try to maintain buffers in other cases, but I think there is some question as to whether or not that's really enforceable at the, at the, at the end of the day, because it is not a separate parcel and is two different zonings on a single parcel. Um, so I think it, it does create, you know, certainly the potential would be we could try to maintain some sort of, again, a spite strip, I guess, if, if that's for lack of a better term. Uh, I think this is what, what staff has generally referred to that as. But, uh, we do believe that in terms of, you know, the usual, the setback requirements in, in general terms, obviously this neighborhood has been used to a much larger setback because of the hundred-foot area that is there because of the existing situation with the zoning. Um, but I think in terms of general, you know, intensity of uses, that twenty-five setback is one of the larger setbacks that we've seen between different uses in town. But again, understanding what this particular neighborhood has had the, the benefit of having a larger setback because of that R one zoning strip.
Sure, and, and so again, I, kind of the reason I'm undersea, uh, asking and what I wanna truly understand, of course, I want everyone to hopefully understand with me, um, is if we, if, if, we don't have the ability to put riders or contingencies on this, so, so that's not an option. Um, and if we do, if, if we basically, again, said, I mean, C, if C two is really the only, uh, zoning code that can be used for this and we've heard everybody say, hey, we support the development, the only way for that development to occur is if it's in fact C two.
The only thing that, that could possibly be an option is if, if there could be a justification for a planned unit development on the particular site.
Which was my next question.
So.
So if we did, if we denied the zoning, I presume they would come forward with a P U D. And, and the P U D, and again, I just, I'm, this is my brain working, I want you to tell me if I'm right or not, the P U D actually would not have the setback requirements and buffers that the ordinance currently requires, is that accurate?
It would be, it would be a nego, it could be a negotiated essentially setback at that point, but there's not an, and there's not an absolute guarantee. Uh, in like, um, the existing zoning district has a minimum that is hard and fast and is not, and it could be something that would have to be negotiated as part of general terms of a planned unit development zoning.
Okay, uh, thank you, and then, um, was this area, because I think, you know, staff obviously made the recommendation that we're trying to clean up the zoning code around in this area. Uh, I mean, was that area originally spot zoned? I mean, why was it so clumsy back there?
I, I think, I think the, well, it's part of the intention was, there was certainly the, the open space between the, um, older retailer uses that were in this immediate area, uh, and the, the existing residential uses. I think the concern was to try to maintain some space between the two. Um, but obviously, again, within the zoning rules, there's certainly property rights that come with an inherent zoning classification, uh, which I think obviously the, the owners in the past have taken advantage of and grown the business in that particular area. So I think it was just a matter of probably trying to, again, the, the, the use of the strip, the, the spite strips to present zoning certainly is, has been something that has worked for the most part in the past, but it does present other logistical issues and still creates some use issues in, in, in going forward. So set, trying to clean those up and getting it, getting each parcel, individual parcel to a single zoning classification without, you know, there could always be a land division done if there's two different uses that needed to be done.
Right.
On that particular site, so trying to essentially.
The spite strip to me seems to fit like kind of the authentic definition of a spot zoning and, and when you go back to where we were maybe a year or so ago, uh, probably not even that long, six months ago, uh, you know, this body spoke overwhelmingly against spot zoning. Um, so it seemed to me to be odd or at least conflicting with, with previous positions.
It is, it's certainly not stall, I don't believe staff's default position to recommend those if there are other alternatives.
And, and can we preserve, now again, I know you can't require it, but what I'm hearing from the neighbors, what I'm hearing from Ganderud, what I'm hearing from staff, is that zoning is obviously what's before us right now, site plan is something that still has to occur. What I'm hearing from everybody is we wanna make everybody happy. And I get, we, we could, you know, come up with an unlimited number of what-if scenarios. Uh, this could happen, that could happen, but it seems to me like everybody's saying, yeah, we would love to sit down and work together and come up with amicable solutions. The site plan review process, it feels to me at least would be the more appropriate avenue for that?
I think that, again, the, I think the point that was made by some of the, the residents is that, obviously, again, the site plan review is gonna be based on the absolute minimum standard and whether or not it meets that minimum standard. So if, excuse me, if there's a larger setback that is desired on that area, there would be nothing from a regulatory standpoint that would cause us to requ, to be able to require a larger setback once the zoning is actually in place. They could go down to essentially that, build up to that twenty-five foot setback.
Okay, and I appreciate that explanation. For me, you know, I just, I think asking the questions really helps me kind of frame and understand what's happening. Um, you know, and I, I just kinda wanna make a comment because I don't want it to get lost and obviously this is a very challenging situation anytime we have these types of things come before us and, and, you know, there's a lot of time spent on talking about the, the trees. And I just, I, I'm just gonna address the elephant in the room. Unfortunately, it really has no bearing on this discussion at all. It's a private property owner, they have the ability to do with it what they want. And I appreciate people have a strong sentimental value to those and quite frankly, if I was a neighbor, I would too. Uh, that is a really nice asset and amenity to have, but I share that because I just, I want the neighbors that are here to understand maybe why we're not talking about that so much, because it really doesn't influence our ultimate decision. But I don't want it to sound like we're undermining or diminishing the importance of that to you, so. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Weary, did you wanna speak?
Yes, thank you. Um, Ronald Reagan said, trust but verify. I've found in twenty years with zoning, you trust but you require. You know, trust only goes so far, you know, I, um. So Director, um, as you've stated, I think over and over, and it's good to reiterate, site planning really is just a review by staff and as long as it meets the bare minimum requirements, it's gonna be approved by staff and it's done. It's not like it's gonna be some grand presentation that comes back here for us to vote on, 'cause if it meets X, Y, Z, it's, it's done.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I, I, I've seen this in the past where we hold things up so that the two parties, to avoid one clear winner and one clear loser, get together and hammer it out. And that's what the two weeks would be, so they can voluntarily agree as property orders to something that they mutually like, rather than us having to say yes or no, 'cause there's room here, I think, for everybody to be a winner. And so that's why I would, I would vote, and I think you kinda hinted at that, by time for the, for the different parties to get together and kinda hammer something out.
Yeah, if there was, certainly if there was a, a regulatory option that could be pursued on, based on the, what is being presented for an app where staff would certainly prefer, recommend that option. Um, but I think it's certainly, this is, it's, at this point, based on the procedures in terms of the zoning and then the site plan being compared to whatever zoning is in place on that site, I think that the, the most appropriate opportunity is, is for the property owners to basically come together and come to some sort of agreement on how to address that.
You've probably seen that before, where the property owners say, hey, we reached these agreements and, okay.
Yeah, and it's certainly up to those property owners to be, whether it's a, a, a letter, you know, just a, a handshake, hopefully not more than, hopefully more than a handshake. Um, but certainly something in, you know, a formal agreement of some sort between whatever representation for both parties would certainly be, probably be advisable.
I appreciate it, thanks, and I, I can talk more later, but, uh, that's all I have for now, thanks.
And then Mr. Galvin, and after that, Mr. Stoyer.
Alder Galvin, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, a lot of good conversation here, um, dedicated neighbors, um, and also a, a very good uh, presentation or, or good faith effort put on by Ganderud. And, uh, I agree with, uh, Alder Weary. I'm, I'm not wild about forcing Ganderud at, at basically gunpoint to go back to negotiate, but they've already said they're willing to. I've had phone conversations with them and it, it sounds like they really wanna do work with the neighbors. But I also feel for them in that they're expending a lot of their money to try and keep the neighbors happy. They don't have to. And as the leaves fall, we all know that, uh, come November, you're not gonna be laying any cement and the longer that's put off for them, the bigger the cost is for them also. So I, I am in favor of sending it back, um, in, in the hopes that they can come to a mutual agreement between the two of them, uh, but something that we can't hold them to. At, at the end of the day, we can't hold them to it and, and that's, I, I hope everyone understands that. Um, you know, everyone has to agree to just try and work something out and then come back to us for approval. Thank you.
Then Mr. Stoyer and, um, uh, Mr. Scannell and then Ms. Eck.
Thank, thank you.
And I am, uh, the, the queue is, uh, back operational.
Oh, great, oh, thank you.
Attorney Bunker, for, for letting me know, so, um, yeah, I'll be keeping an eye on that, so Alder Stoyer and then Alder Eck, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, Director, um, you know, there was talk about, and I, I forget what they call that, the R one strip, was the name for it, what was that called?
I forget, it was a spite strip, generally, yeah.
Spite? Yeah, I don't know, I, I don't know. Anyway, that's, that is what it is. But with that, with that being said, um, in your estimation, if that, if that area to the north, you know, if you left that spite strip alone, left it R one, if you took that other piece of C one and made it C two, and would that, would that take, would that hurt the project in your estimation?
I guess I would certainly have to defer to the applicant on that, I think, Alder, but I think from our standpoint, again, trying to clean up the zoning and getting it to one set of rules on, for the entire parcel boundary is certainly would be staff's preference on that, um, for a variety of reasons, just for, for logistics in the future. Usually, it's one of these things that usually, they, they seem to make sense, uh, right away when you, when you adopt them, but then suddenly ten, fifteen years down the road, everyone's trying to wonder exactly why there's two different zonings on a property and they can't get financing because of there's, there's two different land use regulations. And, and it does, it does have a tendency to create problems beyond the solving maybe the immediate issue. Um, so I think the, 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 it would be more advisable, I think, for the property owners to come to an agreement to tell them how to, how to best address the setback desires.
Thank you.
Thanks Alder. Alder Eck?
Okay, um, so first of all, I, um, I did get a chance to go out there and look at it. I was talking to Brittany and then next thing I know, half those people that are over there were out there to talk to me. About half, right? It was a neighborhood meeting in, um, in the backyard there and, and they're very passionate about this and I understand it. It, this is a, it is, it's, it is difficult. It's a difficult situation. And, uh, this is a bit of a side note, but there was the use of the word neighborhood meeting and, um, there's a difference between neighborhood association and the neighborhood meeting. And this was in the neighborhood and I'm the president of my neighborhood association, so I just wanna put that out there. It wasn't the neighborhood association and I know that, um, our chairman, Michael Parodic, just, uh, you know, he was here to speak on that. Just to, to clarify, that is a difference. It was, it was Ganderud putting out, uh, um, an invitation for the neighbors to meet at Ganderud about the project. So that's a, a whole separate thing, but I, I do, I don't know, I just felt like I had to clarify that was nothing to do with neighborhood associations. Um, but it is difficult and I know that when you do have that, um, empty lot in the back, it's, you do get accustomed to it. I grew up, um, if anybody knows where the Tower Motel is, I grew up behind there. A completely empty lot for my entire childhood. We used to sled on that hill back there and it was always for sale. And after I, I grew up and moved up and my mom still lives there, it did sell and now there's apartment buildings up two, probably as close as they could, um, to her, uh, lot line, all the way down. Uh, they put up cedars, big tall cedars to cover it. And, you know, it was disappointing because we can hear everything that's going on there, so it happens. I, I just wanna say that it does happen, it's happened, um, and it's affected my family personally. Um, so it, it's, it's hard because we don't want to be a stumbling block for, um, economic growth either. So it, it, this is just, I have empathy and, um, it is a tough decision, but I do think that, um, it seems to make sense to refer this back to, um, the planning, right? For, that's what they're asking for, for planning and kind of to hash some of these things out. So that's my thought.
Thank, thanks Alder. I think Alder Campbell was also contemplating that motion earlier, so we are, we are in need of a motion.
Refer back to plan committee.
Alder Weary makes that motion to refer that item back to the plan, and that was seconded by Alder Campbell. Discussion on that motion? Uh, yes, Alder Johnson, go ahead.
Just a, a point of order to seek clarification, when is the next plan commission meeting relative to the council meeting? Because while the intent might be to hold it for two weeks, my fear is that ends up being a month. Yeah, and I just wanna understand the schedule. And, and specifically, I'm asking it, Alder Weary, is, if it makes sense to just hold it for two weeks and bring it back here? Or does, because if the conversation's gonna be between neighbors and staff, it's coming back here anyway, right?
Yeah.
It's up to you, but I, it, the schedule, Alder?
Director.
Yeah, normally, we would, we would have a plan commission meeting on the twenty-sixth, however, that has been canceled due to a lack of items, so. So probably maybe advisable for timing purposes to bring it, just do it to, bring it to staff and to bring it back to hold for one meeting, I suppose. If Joanne has a, a different opinion on how to address that.
No, that will work.
Okay.
I will give the parties two weeks to, to work on a mutually agreeable resolution and, um, I think it can be done, I know it can be done.
So, um, forgetting if we need to withdraw Alder Weary's motion?
No, you can amend it.
I withdraw it, whatever it needs to be.
Yeah.
Whatever you want.
Procedurally, withdraw, vote on that.
I withdraw my motion to refer.
Okay. Alder Weary makes a motion to withdraw, uh, the existing motion. That was seconded by? Alder Campbell, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was his name? You guys have it? That motion is withdrawn. Alder Weary?
I'd make a motion to hold this until our next council meeting.
Alder Weary makes a motion to hold this item over until our next council meeting. That was seconded by Alder Campbell. Any discussion on that motion?
Yes.
Alder Scannell?
Yeah, I think I'm against hold. Um, since we have no authority here, um, what happens if they don't come to an agreement in two weeks? Are we really gonna deny this? I'm, I'm not so sure. And I understand the neighborhood's concerns that, um, by holding, holding this, they have more leverage, you know, over Ganderud. But I really feel, I mean, if this was, if we're in the middle of summer, I think this wouldn't be a big deal to hold. We're in the middle of September. I, I, I just, I think Ganderud has been in good faith, they've done all their work and now I, I feel like we're punishing them. And, and, and it just does not seem right. They have, I mean, it's been brought up that some of the. And it, it, it just does not seem right, they have, I mean, it's been brought up that some of the neighbors feel a little concerned because they cut down the trees. Well, as was stated, that's not an issue, that, that was their right, and that has nothing to do with any of this. Um, Gandrewd in the past has shown they will work with the neighbors. I don't see any reason why that would change, and if we hold this two weeks, we could very well be putting their plans off a year. They're not going to get their, their, uh, work done, the weather's going to change, and they're going to be screwed. And, and that does not seem right to me, I, I think, like I said, if it's the middle of summer and we could hold this, uh, for two weeks without any consequences, I'd be fine with it, but I think there's a good chance there'll be consequences, uh, against Gandrewd. And for a company that everyone agrees has been a good company, wants to see them grow, and they have in the past proven they will work with the, the neighborhood, I see no reason why they won't now. I understand the neighborhood feels a little, on pins and needles in that, they have to take it on good faith, but they pretty much have to take it on good faith anyway. Because I don't see this council denying this change, this zoning, I mean, that's going to happen. As, as far as I can see, I mean, we, this is the plan for the city, this is what we've been working toward as a council, to get these zonings, uh, in order. So, um, I, I, I think Gandrewd's proven themselves, and it's just too late in the year, and I, I, I appreciate all the things that neighbors have done, I appreciate their position, but I truly feel that, that, the issues that they are concerned about, that, that brings doubt in their mind about Gandrewd's good intentions just are not, are not valid, like taking down the trees, that, that, those are going to come down anyway. That doesn't mean Gandrewd isn't going to work with them to, uh, uh, address their issues. So, um, I think I am going to vote against the hold. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Alder. Alder Stoyer and then Alder Burnett?
You can take me off, thanks.
Alder Burnett?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mayor, I, um, I'll be honest, I'm conflicted, I, I really am, I, I always tend to support people in neighborhoods, you know, the integrity of a neighborhood, the safety, the living conditions, quality of life are important, as are private property rights and an ability for a company to grow and prosper and bring additional business to their enterprise and grow the city, all that stuff. It's competing principles for me, and I think for me, the thing I struggle with is, and, and I know this wasn't the, the, the neighbor's intent, but I felt like there were some kind of digs taken at Gandrewd a little bit, that for, for members of the public who are watching this, they could kind of get a bad opinion of Gandrewd, who according to our staff and what we've heard from them, have been doing everything that they should be doing, perhaps not to the liking of the ma, uh, uh, the mayor, I have the mayor on my mind, but, don't know why. Obviously, I know why, but I hope he's doing well, but, um, but to the liking of the neighborhood, i- it's a tough issue. And when we have a company that goes through the proper channels and does everything to the best of our knowledge properly, and we kind of hear some things be insinuated about their intent moving forward, it's hard to, hard to kind of hear that without coming to their defense a little bit. And again, I don't know if that was the neighbor's intent, the neighborhood's intent, but that's the way it made me feel, and, and I just, I have to balance that in my own head, so I'm, I'm really conflicted as well. Alder Scannell, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Attorney Bungert, I see on the agenda tonight, uh, we have ordinances first reading, which includes the zoning uh, reclassifications for both of these items, should it pass out of the, the report. My question for you procedurally, uh, this would have to come back to the next council meeting for a second and final reading, is that correct?
If, if it's not taken up today on first reading, which if the underlying item out of, uh, Plan Commission is being held and no action, and it's not being approved, then the ordinance can't be moved forward for first reading, so it would also need to be pulled at that time and held to the next, uh, council meeting.
Let me re-ask the question.
Yeah.
Every, to adopt the ordinance, it requires two readings.
Correct.
So my point is, even if we pass this tonight, we're only doing the first reading, and it would still have to be in the next council agenda for a second reading.
Correct.
So the reason I'm bringing that up is, perhaps we can, uh, accept Alder Weary's motion.
Yes.
And then with that, on the next council agenda, do a first and final reading for the ordinance, so that way we've lost zero time, but we've also given the neighbors two weeks, uh, to do what they need to do.
Correct. The only additional procedural step is that, um, the, um, the vote ha, is at a higher threshold to adopt.
Understood, okay, so, so I, I, I'm going to get on board with Alder Weary's motion recognizing, or maybe with the assumption, I don't know if it requires a, a motion by this body, or if staff can just unilaterally make that decision to do a first and final reading on the next agenda?
We can put, we can do that, the clerk can put it on for first and final.
I just feel like that's a very happy compromise that gets everybody what they want out of this.
All right, thank you, Alder Johnson. Any other comments from council on Alder Weary's motion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, and that item is over until our next meeting, and just, um, just for the record, want to state, uh, you know, my office, and I would imagine Director Stechelty, Stechelty's department would be happy to sort of help mediate any discussions between the parties, if that is needed. Um, just want to make sure that that, that is clear, but appreciate everybody coming in and all the testimony offered by all concerned. With that, we'll move along to, um, item three. I believe that was, um, Alder Hutchison?
Um, I would like to, uh, pull this item, um, I defer to the city attorney for the direction and reasons why.
Yes, so the recommended action on this is to actually deny the, um, the CUP. So the underlying request, um, was tied with a request that was coming in front of RDA, uh, last week, um, and that request was actually withdrawn from the RDA. Um, so the CUP is no longer needed, so therefore the, uh, appropriate action would be to, uh, go ahead and amend the item to deny.
Okay. I, I saw a move to deny.
All right, Alder Hutchison makes a motion to deny, that was seconded by Alder Scannell, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, that item has been denied, on to item five. Alder Hutchison?
Again, I, uh, defer to the attorney to address, uh, it's a, apparently a, uh, uh, strategy move, or things we have to go through first, so.
Yes, correct, so, um, essentially, we, in order to proceed with the, um, the discontinuation of the unimproved right of way, the affected or adjacent parcels have to be, um, combined, so that we're not creating a landlocked parcel. So, um, the recommended action is to hold this request, um, or this item, um, and then it'll come back. Essentially, staff will then bring forward, um, a proposal or an action item to combine the parcels. Once that's approved by council, then the request to discontinue the, uh, rights of way can come back to council for approval. So, um, we just need to do it, um, lined up in time appropriately, so that we're not, uh, contrary to state statute. So, motion to hold.
I'm moved to hold.
All right, Alder Hutchison makes a motion to hold this item, that was seconded by Alder Scannell, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, that item has been held, and I would entertain the same motion back on J, which is public hearings. Entertaining a motion to hold that public hearing.
Second.
That was a motion to hold by Alder Stevens and second by Alder Hutchison.
Okay, very good, thank you, clerk, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, and that public hearing has been held, on to ordinance's second reading for adoption. Alder Johnson makes a motion to suspend the rules and take up items one and two with one rule called vote. There was, uh, seconded by Alder Ek?
Correct.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, the rules are suspended. Motion to approve made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Scannell. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will use the board.
Thank you, you may vote. Alders Campbell and Weary, how would you like to be recorded? No, I said, I said Campbell. Yes. Um, so, he went to the restroom. Yes.
Someone let him know that the vote is happening?
Mr. Weary, this is for, uh, ordinance's second reading. Thank you, that's 12-0 in favor.
All right, thank you, clerk, those are adopted, on to report of the redevelopment authority. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell.
Second by Alder Stevens.
Second by Alder Stevens, any items here to be handled separately? Yes.
Just need the record to reflect an abstention on item one, the applicant, uh, oversees my compensation.
Very good, thanks, Alder. All right, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay?
It's okay.
The ayes have it, that report has been adopted, or approved rather, uh, to improvement services? Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stoyer, items here to be handled separately? Ten? Any others? Hearing none, others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, the report has been approved with the exception of item ten. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stoyer, I believe that was held, or, uh, pulled by Alder Johnson?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, for the amount of discussion that we had, around $100,000 on the branding initiative, I'm surprised, uh, that we didn't have any questions, uh, Director Grenier, on, uh, why $257,000 repair on a brand new lift station? If you could please, uh, just kind of walk us through that?
I watched it.
Director Grenier?
Oh, sorry. Short answer is, uh, soil conditions caused some, uh, differential settlement on the, on the lift station. We did an exhaustive soils investigation prior to completing that work, this was just something that was not discovered during the geophysical. Anytime you're digging that deep underground, that type of potential does exist.
Okay, and so, um, and again, this is where I just want to properly understand maybe where liability resides, uh, because obviously we hired a contractor to do that work, so I presume if we're paying for the repairs, the, the suggestion here is that the liability resides with the city versus the contractor?
That is correct.
Okay, and so who is responsible for the engineering study?
That would be my office.
Okay, and, and so this is just something that was not detected and, and ultimately it, it sank, is that what happened?
Correct, uh, without getting technical, there was a pocket of unsuitable soils. Again, we did a, a fairly exhaustive peppering of that site with borings over the years. Um, this was just an unsuitable soil, uh, lo, unsuitable soil layer that remained undetected during the geophysical investigation.
Okay, and we know that's a difficult site, and I don't want this to sound like it's a, a, a question of the integrity of the work that you guys have done.
Yep.
Uh, more so, I just really wanted to kind of understand what happened, because it is a big expenditure on something that's brand new.
Yes.
Uh, and then, and then really just verify where the liability that lied, so, uh, it's, I, I mean, it's an unfortunate mistake, but I, I also think it's something as a council that we have to acknowledge, that's a pretty big expense, um, so, um.
Well, I would, I wouldn't characterize it as a mistake, it was an undiscovered buried soil layer.
Understood, understood, so, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. We do have a motion and a second, any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, on to report of the Protection Policy Committee. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens?
Yes.
Any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, that report has been approved, report of the Protection Policy Committee granting operator licenses. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Campbell, uh, any names to be handled separately or any abstentions here? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, and that report has been approved. Skipping a couple here, down to report of the Park Committee. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Weary, items here to be handled separately? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed nay? The ayes have it, that report has been approved, personnel? Motion to approve made by Alder Galvin?
Yes.
And that was, seconded by whom?
By Alder Stevens.
Seconded by Alder Stevens, items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor?
Yes, excuse me, Your Honor, two and three pulled by Alder Hutchison.
Uh, two and three?
Yes.
Okay. Any others? Hearing none, others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, the report has been approved, the exception of items two and three. Uh, item two? Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell?
Yes, and seconded by Alder Stevens.
Seconded by Alder Stevens, that item was pulled by. Alder Hutchison?
Yeah. Um, in the, uh, committee, uh, there was absolutely no discussion of two and three, um, Alder Burnett unfortunately couldn't join because of glitches with his computer, so the committee pushed these along so the discussion could occur at the common council. So, um, I'm looking forward to a explanation of what these are for.
Okay, Alder Burnett, would you like to weigh in?
Yeah, uh, item two, um, there is a constituent who had made a comment on Facebook about a month ago about a raccoon that, um, appeared not well in their neighborhood, and they contacted the humane officer, and then another, another person in the neighborhood had expressed frustration with the city, they called about a raccoon call, and they did not get a humane officer out there. And so, of course, being the person that I am and a representative of the city, I wanted to kind of come to the city's defense, so I co, contacted Officer Mavis, who as you all know, hopefully is our humane officer, had a really good conversation with her, and she's very responsive, she was extremely responsive when I called, and she was actually on her way out there to deal with the raccoon call, so when we got to talking, she had indicated that since December, she had been on 130 calls specific to raccoons, and she is a, a peace officer, you know, she carries a firearm, and one thing that I came to realize, uh, after the conversation was that when we have a shortage of police officers and other issues that our sworn officers could be responding to, perhaps there's a better way, a more efficient way of responding to these lower level calls that aren't necessarily unsafe. So I think, uh, Chief Davis, since that conversation with Officer Mavis, I had reached. I had reached out to Chief Davis around the time I submitted this communication, and he said that he believes there may be, be a solution, so Mr. Mayor, I think it might be appropriate if Chief Davis just responds to this, to see if this is even necessary at this point.
Sounds good, thanks Alder, uh, Chief Davis, any thoughts?
Sure, so we've done some analysis and, uh, I, I will tell you that there's a reason why we have a sworn officer who focuses on animal control issues, and I would not recommend that we stop having a sworn officer do that work for a number of reasons, uh, in animal abuse or hoarding investigations or, or those kind of situations. It's helpful to have someone with statutory authority to make arrests, to, to apply for search warrants and other things that require a police officer. But Alder, as we discussed in our conversation, we have, you know, we do know from the data, if you look at the number of animal calls Officer Mavis takes in a year, and then you look at the number of animal calls everyone else in the department takes combined, which would indicate where she's not available for one reason or another. They're about the same, so that tells you there's probably, uh, a, a body of work that could be done by another full-time employee. You know, for us, it's really a matter of, of which priority is, is higher, and of course, that's not my decision to make, that's up to the council. Just a rough kind of back-of-the-napkin estimate of, we, we do have a job description that still exists for a, a non-police officer, animal control specialist. One problem that we have had filling that position though in the past apparently is the pay was pretty low, and we weren't able to recruit for it, uh, because it was considered at the level of like a community service officer. And it's a pretty high level of specialization that's necessary to be good at that work. So, my, just best estimate of what something like that might cost would be with fringe benefits in the neighborhood of eighty-six thousand dollars a year for, to, to be able to put that somewhere where we would be able to fill it. Again, you know, there are lots of, of competing uses for scarce resources within the police budget and elsewhere, and so, you know, I I won't speak to the relative priority of this versus all the other potential uses of money, but hopefully that is helpful.
Yeah, um, thank you, that, that is, and, uh, this kind of triggered because I thought, you know, dealing with raccoons, and in my district, I have a very wooded area, you know, a lot of, a lot of animals for a variety of reasons, deer, turkey, I get calls all the time. And so when we look at having officers respond to the wildlife calls, is there a better way? So, so in regard, in regards to this, the conversation I had with Chief Davis, I just want to make sure everyone knows it was not meant to be in any way a criticism of the department, that deploying officers, I think there is a need for a humane officer, obviously, but it was just an intent to see if we could, um, find a better way to do calls for raccoons and other things that tend to come up from time to time, so I'd be content making a motion to refer to the mayor for consideration to include in the, the budget, and leave it up to the, the chief, I actually refer to the police department perhaps for consideration as you prepare the budget, is that fair?
Yeah, I think, um, I think the motion probably accomplishes that unless you want it to be more specific, but I think, I think that captured it.
Say that again, mayor?
I was just saying, I think the motion as it exists probably captures, um, what you're talking about, unless you want it to be more specific, but I think refer to staff.
So, uh, council, because I brought it forward, if they have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great, um, Alder Steyer?
Thank you, your honor. I piggyback on what Alder Burnett said, I, I had the privilege of talking with Chiefs, uh, Davis last week as well, uh, on a number of issues, but animal control was one of them as well. And I've talked to Alder, or Officer Mavis several times, and I feel she's very overworked, uh, one person, they had three part-time positions available, but it's hard to get good candidates for that and to hold people for that, so I'm all on board at, at least looking at this at budget time, so I, I agree with Alder Burnett on that, thank you.
Got it, thanks Alder, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all, oh, Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I would concur with the previous two speakers, uh, this used to be a civilian-level employee, and then it was made into a sworn officer. When it was a civilian-level employee, and early on when it was a sworn officer, they did have those three interns, and so they really had four people to kind of cover different shifts and different areas, and now we're really down to one and, and hoping for others, so whatever we can do to help, because Officer Mavis is an excellent employee, and she's great at what she does, but she's going to get burnt out, that's a, that's a tough job, and, and we need to, they've been asking for help for years, so, see what we can do, thanks.
Thanks Alder. Any other comments? Seeing none, all, signify by saying aye. Opposed nay? You guys have it, and that item has been referred.
I don't, I don't think they, they didn't vote, mayor.
Your card has snapped.
Yeah. One more time.
Alright, well, time to vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, item has been referred, on to item three. Your wishes here?
Same reason, um, there was no discussion at committee level on this, and I'd just like to hear, uh, back up.
Sounds good, uh, Alder Burnett?
Yeah, thank you, mayor, obviously, we're one city government, but we're different branches of the same city government, and, you know, the administrative side, the executive has numerous employees, and of course, all department heads report to the mayor. I'm not opposed to that, obviously, I think that's good governance, but one thing over time I have realized, uh, my time on the city council, is that, that the body, our body, the legislative branch, doesn't have an assistant to help us do certain things like research, ideas, research proposals, uh, recognize community events that perhaps city council members could be aware of, and I'm not looking necessarily for a full-time position, I don't want to be hypocritical, I'm always very mindful of city finances and the budget, so I certainly wouldn't want to create a full-time position, but at this point, unless, of course, the dollars are there and the council would recommend that, but I think it's worth looking into what other municipalities do, our size, uh, when I was on the county board, you know, that was a body of twenty-six, and of course, county get, government's a little different than city government, but we had a legis, we had, I don't know what the title was, but it was an assistant, and then another assistant, I think it was a thirty-hour employee, a thirty-five-hour employee, and there was also internal auditor that the county board had, so the county board chairperson supervised those positions, and they provided a lot of support to the county board members, so again, I'm, I'm not looking to do anything major at this point, but just, just refer to staff to see what a job description of a legislative assistant will look like, uh, and of course, work with this council to draft it, and then if it's worthy of consideration come budget time, if, if the body sees fit to include that, if the mayor sees fit to include that in his budget, then I think it's something we should consider, it's pretty simple.
Thanks Alder, any additional comments or questions on this item from council? Alder, looks like Alder Eck is in the queue?
Uh, yes, um, so, uh, I, I, I look, I like the idea of this, um, because I can, you know, we have our legislative branch, which is our city council, we have the executive branch, which would be the mayor in his office, and, or, you know, staff, I guess, um, and so I feel like this would be helpful for us to be able to ask questions that are specifically related to what we need, that would be separate from, say, the council that is really designated for, um, the mayor and his staff. So, I, I'm in favor of this.
Alright, thanks Alder. Any other comments? Seeing none, we, we are nee, in need of a motion.
Uh, Alder Hutchison, would you like to speak again?
Yeah, so...
Oh, Alder Hutchison, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, um, so this staff person would be working for the council? Is that, is that something that's legal? I guess I'm...
Attorney Bungart, do you have any insight into that?
Yes, I, so I can kind of comment on, on that a little bit, and then also have, um, Chief Faltz also chime in as well, um, as needed, but um, essentially, any staff members would have to be under the direction of one of the directors, not necessarily under council. Um, there could be, as council or elected officials, they don't have staff, or staff, staffers in any way, shape, or form, so any kind of staffing assistance would actually be under, it would have to be under one of the, the directors or one of the appointed officials that are, um, set out in our table of organizations.
Okay, so, it would be a staff member, and do we have any staff people who are, uh, versed in this work?
My, my staff does this frequently. Um, I, I frequently take in requests, um, as many of the Alders know, and do research and answer questions, um, and also direct a lot of, um, research questions, particularly legislative questions, ordinance questions, statutory authority questions to our legislative attorney, um, Assistant City Attorney Logan Wood, who is our new, newly, um, added fifth attorney to the department.
So, um, there is a position being proposed that potentially already kind of can be done with existing staff?
The role would be shared, um, obviously, as, as my predecessor had expressed to council, and I will probably repeat that, that the law department has plenty of work to go around, um, so, um, it's, uh, I definitely would never, um, say that our department is, is staffed to the rafters, and we wouldn't appreciate additional help, um, in the form of a, a, a research assistant or a legislative assistant. But again, whether it's, it's functioning in my department or another department, um, there would have to be some oversight, um, within the current table of organization that we have with respect to our appointed officials, um, tasked with those departments in the city.
Okay, thank you, and I guess I have a question for Alder Burnett. It looks like, um, we're looking for absolutely new jobs and, and funding for these in two thousand twenty-three, and yet, we can't approve an existing position of diversity coordinator? I'm just interested in your logic in how we can hold off on one, and yet propose totally new, uh, jobs that need more money that hasn't already been approved for the city. Um, I was kind of, uh, a little bit dumbfounded by these two requests for two thousand twenty-three when we went through the last couple meetings with this diversity coordinator not being approved because of the, the tremendous, uh, load that the budget carries, and I just would like your comments on that.
Sure, uh, Alderman, I, the, the motion, the, the agenda item is not to fill the position, it is simply to refer to staff to do exactly some of the things that Attorney Bungart just provided, we did have this position in city hall at one point, uh, long before I was here, so it's not unheard of. Uh, and then second of all, there's no funding attached to this, this is simply for staff to, you know, research it, and then, uh, it could be a consideration come budget time, a- as I mentioned earlier, I'm not saying I'm in favor of it, we have to look at all of the priorities. I stated I don't want to be hypocritical, you are correct, I, I advocated and holding that diversity, inclusion, equity position, and, um, for good reason, and I think that we can't even have that discussion come budget time if we don't at least have staff do the groundwork to, to allow this to even be considered come November, so...
Thanks Alder, anything further, Alder Hutchison?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay, thanks Alder, Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, what once was old is new again, because I, I was on the council when we had that legislative assistant, uh, former Alderman Dave Nannig, transit director, was in that position, it was a half-time position, and he was under, I'm not sure who he reported to, but he did a lot of work for council, and I thought it was a, a much-needed position, and, um, Mayor Schmidt, for whatever reason, um, on a close vote, eliminated the position and changed it over, so I, it does have precedence, it's been here, and it was a very useful position, so it's worth looking at, thanks.
Thanks Alder. Still in, in need of a motion on this.
Motion to refer to staff to research.
Motion has been made by Alder Burnett to refer this item to staff, and that was seconded by Alder Weary. Any additional discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes appear to have it, and that item has been referred. On to, receiving place on file.
Second.
Alder Scannell makes a motion to receive and place on file the building report for August twenty-twenty-two and the municipal court report for August twenty-twenty-two, and that was seconded by?
Melinda Eck.
Alder Eck, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, and those items have been received and placed on file, resolutions?
Motion to suspend the rules for all except number three.
Motion has been made to suspend the rules and take up items one, two, four, and five with one roll call vote. Is there a second for that?
Alder Johnson did. He did, he said it first.
Oh, can you say that again?
Alder Johnson said it, uh, seconded it.
Very good, uh, that was, the motion was made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, the rules are suspended. Uh, I think, I think we need to adopt, we would...
The ones you just suspended.
Oh, wait, we suspended, okay, motion to adopt, one, two, four, and five.
That motion to adopt was made by Alder Scannell.
Seconded by Alder Stevens.
Seconded by Alder Stevens, and we will use the board.
Thank you, you may vote. Alder Morgan? Okay. Yeah, um... I think it just disappeared, that was a, that was approved twelve to nothing.
Alright, thank you clerk, on to item three.
Motion to hold.
Motion to hold made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Ald, Alder Stevens, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? You guys have it, and that resolution has been held, ordinance is first and final reading. Motion to adopt, and that was seconded by Alder Weary? Appreciate that, um, any explanation from our city attorney? Just, just so folks are aware.
Yes, um, so the purpose of this ordinance is, um, I, I believe about a month ago, council adopted the, um, the parks encroachment policy, allowing for park staff to start reviewing parcels, um, and properties that are encroaching into parks and greenways belonging to the city, um, and that policy was adopted, um, the ordinance, this ordinance change essentially provides, um, an enforcement mechanism under ordinance by which that policy can therefore be enforced, so, um, and because of the timing issue with the program moving forward, that is why staff presented it for first and final reading for adoption.
Very good, thanks Attorney Bungart. Um, and refresh my memory, do we need, uh, a motion to suspend the rules, or do we just need to get above a certain threshold?
Right, I'm looking into that right now, because that dawned on me that I, I, I didn't remember, off the top of my head. One second.
No problem.
Yes, so mayor, the rule is, um, in order for an ordinance to be acted upon at the meeting, it is... Yes. So Mayor, the rule is in order for an ordinance to be acted upon at the meeting it is introduced, the rule must be suspended by two-thirds vote. So the rules must be suspended by two-thirds and then a regular majority is necessary for passing and adopting.
Got it. Thank you, Attorney Bunker. I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules. Second.
Motion to suspend the rules made by Alder Scannell and seconded by Alder Johnson. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Without any discussion, we will use the board.
Thank you. You may vote. How, oh. Is it just delayed coming up for you, Mr., Alder Morgan? Okay. Thank you. All right, that passes twelve, nothing.
Thank you, clerk. On to ordinance's first reading. The, I think on this first item, we would want to hold that.
Hold. Yes.
Motion to hold number one.
Motion to hold item one made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens.
Yes.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and that item has been held. On to item two.
Motion to advance. Second.
Motion to advance made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and that item has been advanced to a second and final reading. Petitions and communication? Anything there?
Alder Burnett?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I know this is out of order, but I think I speak for the entire council when I say we all wish you a real speedy recovery and hopefully have you back in City Hall soon. You did a great job navigating this meeting and I know it was difficult being home, having a lot of side conversations, laughing, joking. When the mayor's away, the council will play. But get well soon. Hope to see you at City Hall soon.
I appreciate that. Yeah, I miss being with you. Things appeared to get a little squirrely at times. So I'll get back to this stuff.
I'll second it.
All right. Seeing no petitions or communications, we'll move on to adjournment.
Motion to adjourn it. Second.
Motion to adjourn made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Eck. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Thanks so much, everybody. Appreciate your patience. Good night.
Thank you.